Sorry, Mr. Kegel. It's not too often I get to rap the gavel and get our city manager jumped about three feet, but it's always good to do. Welcome, everyone. Today is Thursday, June 7, 2018. The time is 6:01 PM. This is a special work session. City of Leander, Texas. I'm going to move to open number two. We do have a quorum present. We are eligible to do business. However, we will not be taking any action during this work session. We're going to go to item number three and receive the presentation from Joe Minicozy and Urban Three regarding economic impact analysis of the North Line project. Mr. Yanis?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. So, I think tonight's a pretty exciting night for the community as we get to talk about a project that I think we've all been waiting for, for a very long time, to come to fruition. The TOD plan, as y'all know, has been in the works for many years, and tonight, we're getting to look at the proposal of a key piece of its development. But before we do that, what we wanted to give you guys is some background information on the economics of what's being proposed tonight. And so, we wanted to get an outside opinion about what it meant to make an investment in this area, in the infrastructure, that you're going to see tonight on the agenda. And so, we hired Joe Minicozy with Urban Three, who does this across the country, where he analyzes the impact of different forms of development and their economic return for cities. And so, I'm not going to go into a whole lot of Joe's background. He'll do some of that in his presentation, telling you about how he got into this business. But I want to turn it over to Joe and let him go through his analysis that he's done for the North Line project, as well as just give you an overview of the overall goal that we're trying to do in the TOD and what it means for the long term for the city of Leander. So with that, I'll turn it over to Joe.
Thank you. Is my mic on? Can y'all hear me? Thanks, Mayor, councilors. Thanks for having me as part of this presentation. From a background standpoint, I grew up in part of the Rust Belt, and when I was a kid, my community tore down its entire downtown and built a replica of a wooden fort in the middle of the downtown. It was kind of fascinating growing up in that environment than leaving and going off to college to learn how to build cities, knowing that my city basically killed itself, that they had assets and eliminated them. So, after graduation, I went to work in real estate finance. I worked for John Hancock Real Estate Investment in Boston, and we held essentially $4 billion worth of real estate, and it was fascinating yet again to see how we handled data and information. And then, worked in city government in West Palm Beach. I was a zoning administrator, which was super exciting for about five years, and saw how I didn't understand the interaction of development and zoning policies. I moved to Asheville and started working for a real estate developer, and in that, I had the light bulb go off of how it's all connected. So, I'm going to tell a story about how this all operates, but mostly, I want to put some metaphors up there, maybe some analogies, of how I explain cities to people. Cities are places in time. Y'all are going to grow into something, and you're essentially babies, like this is me when I was a baby, when I had hair, and this is my trajectory, right? Yeah, I had a lot of it. I was only three months old, and my mom put a barrette in my hair, by the way. So, I'm going to be papa whether I like it or not. There's not a lot I can do to change that trajectory. I'm genetically Italian. You can see that from my name. You can see I wave my hands around when I talk. But this is my father. Again, this is when I had hair. We have a genetic predisposition in my family as well, that we have a genetic quirk about heart issues. So, my dad had a seven bypass heart surgery. What do you call that? A septuple? You know, it's so... This is in all of us. We all know that it's coming toward us, and you all do this, right? You all know your family members. The older we get, the scarier it gets. But the thing I want to put forward in this presentation is thinking about your future. What does Leander want to be when it grows up? Who's your grandfather? Who's your grandmother? What can you learn from other places as you grow forward? So, this is... I want to go through a lot of stuff, a lot of data, but I really want to stand on this point for a second. Think about where you're going. I live in Asheville now. It's about four and a half hours northeast of Atlanta. Beautiful setting. We have the Blue Ridge Mountains, bluegrass music. We're 90,000 people. We have 40 breweries. That's about 5,000 people per brewery, if you're doing the numbers. And we're a quirky town with men that dresses, nuns on tall bikes that eat fire. It's your typical little place, right? It's a joke. We actually were flat on our faces in the '90s. These are shots of downtown Asheville from the 1990s. So, unlike my hometown, Asheville actually had these assets that they just ignored and walked away from. They didn't wipe them out like my hometown did. And I went to work for this guy, Julian Price. Julian's company, he essentially inherited a ton of money, and he put $15 million into a for-profit real estate development company. So, I worked for Public Interest Projects, which is a for-profit real estate development company. 75% of our money went in sticks and bricks. We fixed buildings, and then, we reserved 25% to seed businesses. So, we'd find entrepreneurs in our community and put them in business to activate our city. So, this is one of our buildings before and after. This is an old hotel that we converted to apartments. These are 400 to 500 square foot apartments. The banks told us there was no market for this. The banks told us it would fail. And usually, at this point, I'll turn to the audience. Who would live in a 400 to 500 square foot apartment? Two hands. Three hands. Let me change the question. Who in this room has lived in a 400 to 500 square foot apartment? That was our marketing survey. Basically, anybody that's been new to town, recently graduated, recently divorced, want to downsize their life, this is a... In development world, this is called a home run. It's been 99% leased up. It's about changing the way we look at cities and seeing that cities are diverse places for lots of different market opportunities. But really, what we found ourselves doing is constantly hammering home, what does it mean for our community? What's the data that's there for why it's good for us to do work in the community, for the whole community to get it? So, this is the value of our downtown. We started about $100 million. Asheville didn't add a downtown building until 2008, so all of that value was just sitting there. That's just the value of rehabbing the buildings that we have. To show you that it's not all love and roses in Asheville, these are some campaign ads from the '90s. Chris Peterson put these out. I love this. So, the city invested in parking decks, streetscapes, beautification, $26 million of municipal investment. And Chris thought that was a patented gross gift to the downtown merchants. But let's do the math here. If you invest... I mean, $26 million is a lot of money. I don't have that. But if you invest $26 million in $100 million asset, and it grows to $500 million, is investing 26 and yielding $430 million of private investment, is that a good return on investment? Yeah. So, let's do the numbers, and let's talk about that. Everybody's entitled to an opinion, but we have facts that are out there we need to look at. And it's not going to stop Chris, trust me. And Chris's... This is Chris's website now. I asked the mayor, I was like, "Is that a liquor drink?" She goes, "It should be." You know, it's just... It's all right. This is all part of the community dialogue. But really, it makes me think about civics. This is a kid's book that I found at a garage sale, "The City, the Town, and the Country: It's a Teacher's Guide," from 1959, third grade textbook. Kindergarten, where we learn about the house; first grade, the schools; second grade, the neighborhood; third grade, we learn about regional planning. Like, we used to actually learn this stuff in school, about how this is all tied together. Y'all get to the civic side of it. You have to make these decisions for the whole community on a weekly basis. So, I love this in the book. "While patterns vary from state to state, counties are responsible for education, library, health, welfare, et cetera. In studying the functions performed by your county, you will no doubt find there's a duplication of services and overlapping jurisdictions and a lack of coordination between the county and local communities within it." Do y'all have that problem? Every community I go to, this is 1959, there's a lesson. A factory gets built. There's even more kids that go to school. You can see what's going on. We have overcrowding. Some kids are shoved out in the hallway. And in blue, it's painfully white. It's also misogynistic. The girls are shoved out there. I don't know why, but it's the '50s. You ask this kid... You ask this question to the kids. There's more factory, even more kids go to school. In blue, you say, "Give four good reasons for building a new school." And your third graders talk about what? Equity? All the kids should have a desk? Maybe we should have a second teacher? Infrastructure, right? On the right-hand side, you read about Mr. Canfield, who lived next door to the alleys, that "Our taxes are too high now. If we build a new school, we'll need more teachers and pay higher taxes." That is indeed true. Stuff costs money, right? You buy another teacher, you cost more money. So, you ask your third graders, "Why would some people have to pay higher taxes if a new school were built?" So, here you have a community dialogue with third graders learning about cost and need, and somebody has to make a decision how this is all going to work out. But my favorite part about this book is this, where, again, to the teacher, it reminds you that, remember, many children, whether urban and rural, regardless of region, are tragically limited in knowledge of the world, and their world is largely the space in which they live and operate. Right? This tragic limitation, you all go through this probably at every public comment meeting, where somebody has a need that they bring you, but it's their specific need, and it's tragically limited to the whole entire community. In Asheville, we always get people that... They'll come in and demand that the mayor build them a parking space immediately. And so, okay, well, let's just stop the whole city so you can have a parking space. You know, it's... How does this all tie in together? And really, if we step back and think about what a city is, a city is essentially a finite boundary of land that has an economic model to it. So, this gets back to this word, incorporate, straight out of Oxford Dictionary, "To constitute a company, a city, or other organization as a legal corporation." So, you all are the board of directors for a corporation, right? That's all... There's very little difference between our real estate development company and a government. It's just a different organizational structure and how it's managed. But they're both portfolios, right? So, my city is worth $13 billion of taxable value, if you were to go out and create that. So, it's about six times the value of Ted Turner. If we're in a Fortune 500 company, my city would be in the top 500. Does Ted Turner wake up every day and make all of his decisions on Facebook? No. He's thinking about the economic model, the data that's there, and what's good for the corporation. So, if we go back to buildings for a second, this is one of the buildings we rehabbed. We made retail, office, and residential. This is the streetscape project that Chris got all upset about. I should probably use the cursor, sorry. With the garbage... So, thank you, city, for the garbage can, the bike rack, two benches, and the street tree. We didn't pay for that. That's a subsidy at our front door. But we took the taxable value of this building from $300,000 to $11 million. So, our gift to the community is, they got 3,500% more taxes. That's not money we get. That's money y'all get, to go out and buy 3,500% more garbage cans. We don't care. Do y'all get that? This is our community's wealth that we're building. You have a 401K plan that grows by 3,500%, wouldn't that be awesome? And people are like, "Well, Joe, that's not fair. We've got this Walmart over here. This Walmart pays 20... Is about $20 million worth of value, double the value of our building, and it pays $200,000 in taxes." But it's really not fair because it's sitting on 34 acres of my corporation. So, how do you compare it against our building or my house on the right? Well, I pay $2,000 in taxes. I'm on a tenth of an acre. So, if you had a one-acre cookie cutter that fell from space and hit my neighborhood, this is the productivity of my neighborhood, about $20,000 an acre. Y'all follow me? If you take that one-acre cookie cutter, fly it in space, drop it on the Walmart, this is its yield per acre. If you had an acre of our building downtown, this is what you get. So, if you could harvest wealth, what would you harvest? Farmers, when they talk about their... When they farm, it's all about economics. What's the crop yield per acre? The water per acre? The labor per acre? That's their unit of measurement, because all farms are different sizes. So, if we take the same analogy with our city, what kind of crop would you grow? I was presenting this in Colorado, and I was like, "Look, let me make it easy for you people in Colorado. What would you grow?" And they got the joke. So, okay, Joe, this is really cute and everything, but we also have retail. Don't neglect that. So, I don't sell anything in my house. Let's get rid of me, and let's run the numbers of the Walmart. Walmarts typically sell about $77 million worth of stuff. The city gets a portion of a portion of that, so we get 27 cents on the eight cents created of that 77 million, which is about $47,500. So, Walmart actually brings in more retail taxes than property taxes per acre. But when you add the total of them together, it's a total nut of $51,000 of productivity per acre. That's just our property taxes on the right there. You add our retail taxes. Remember, we sell stuff, too. Now, you're cooking with gas, jobs. So, how do you want to look at this? When you stack it up side by side, you let the numbers do the talking for you. We also have 90 units of residential per acre in our building. Now, could y'all imagine if I showed up and presented a 90-unit acre building to your community? Like, what train would you head me out of town on? You know, we have to find ways to talk about the architecture of the city, the growth of the city, the history of the city, and sometimes, the numbers we're looking at are the wrong ones. Now, some people say to me, they're like, "Joe, what's your problem? Why do you hate Walmart?" If that's what you're thinking, let me take a step back for a second. I presented at the International Association of Tax Assessing Officers Conference. Is the assessor in here? Do y'all ever hang out with assessors? Could you imagine 3,000 of them? It wasn't the most dynamic conference. It makes like a planning conference feel like Burning Man or something. But this guy presented at 8:30 in the morning. He was keynote speaker at the assessor's conference. He did spreadsheet after spreadsheet on how cheap his buildings are. I'm in the back of the room watching this all go down. I'm like, "That's efficient. He's getting all of his property tax bills lowered in one meeting." Right? The assessors are agnostic. If it's a low-value building, it's a low-value building. It's $50 a square foot. That's what it is. So, I went up to the microphone, and I asked them. I said, "Mr. Terrell, what's the use of life of one of your buildings?" And he said, "15 years. Maybe 20. We'll be out of that building in 15 or 20 years. The buildings are insignificant for us. We want to maximize the depreciation, build another one, maximize it again. The distribution system's what's important. The buildings aren't." So, that's it. This is your corporation. That's their investment into your corporation. It's a 15-year commitment, which is about the life cycle of a cat. You know, we at least mourn the passing of a cat. Sorry to the cat people in the room, but this is... I'm making a joke about this, but I want you to understand that if you go and look at the trajectory of cities, you will see this in many places. What's the trajectory of that box? And you will find them moving around and all of that stuff. And they're in the marketplace, just be conscious of that decision. So, that's the city side. We don't have a great relationship with our county. My brothers and sisters out in the county took our water system away from us, our airport, and when we sued to get our water system because they didn't pay us anything for it, our state senator threatened, called us a cesspool of sin, which was super awesome. So, we like to show our county brothers and sisters how much we pay in county taxes per acre versus our brothers and sisters out in the county. So, the city resident is more a productive county taxpayer than the county resident. Here's the mall. Now, you'd see why somebody would do commercial versus residential. In every state that I go to, we tend to tax commercial higher than residential, and it's true. But here's our building downtown. So, this is the mall down here. So, what we find with the downtown buildings, what's good for downtown or Main Street is great for the city, but it's incredibly productive for the county, because we don't have any kids in that building going to school. There's no... The county's not picking up the garbage. The county's not policing that thing. So, we're producing all of this wealth for the county. I've breezed through a lot of math, and it's essentially trying to articulate the point of productivity analysis. And we already do this when we talk about cars, right? We don't talk about cars on a miles-per-tank basis, do we? If we did, we'd all be driving Ford F-150s at 650 miles per tank. You'd say to me, "Joe, come on, man. That's stupid. Tanks are different sizes. It's the gallon. We say miles per gallon. That's how we measure cars." And when we say that, the numbers change, and we should all be driving BMW Asetas at 70 miles per gallon. Sorry to you Prius owners. That's more efficient. It's a dangerous little car, though. Yeah, if you have a head on, you're stuck in that thing. But anyway, I'm making a joke here, but I want you to see the productivity side of this coin. So, our firm specializes in the analytics of a city, like the way that your doctor focuses on the different layers of your body. You can do X-rays on your bones, MRIs on your soft tissue. So, back to Asheville. This is my county, 350 square miles of area. This big gray blob right here is Mount Mitchell State Park. It's not taxable. So, just to be crude about it, it's just a park, doesn't pay me taxes. I don't get a red cent out of that thing, right? Low value is in green. Purple is high value. So, we've got low-value stuff up here, and this big purple blob is the Biltmore Estate. That's Bill Cecil's house. It's the Vanderbilt Mansion. It's America's largest house. It's worth $100 million. When Bill Cecil shows up at one of our council meetings, we all genuflect and thank him for his time. He's a very valuable person. But it's sort of not fair, because he's got 180,000 square foot house on 4,000 acres of land. He's got the biggest gas tank. Of course, it's going to be worth a lot of money. So, rather than total value, let's do a map of value per acre, and now, we see a relative productivity. But let me just do it in 3D. Can y'all guess where downtown Asheville might possibly be? Boom. Right in the middle there. Proportionally, we can see how much more powerful, from our economic producer, that is, versus everything else in the county. I can also see our little sister over here called Black Mountain. We can see its Main Street popping up. That's a community of 12,000 people right there. So, now, think about it from a tax perspective. Your millage rate is the same across the entire county. Everybody's paying the same mill rate for the county across this whole thing. So, imagine throwing, in our case, our county is a 12-mill county. Imagine throwing a 12-mill-thick blanket across this whole entire thing. Where's the county getting its wealth? So, in defense of my brothers and sisters out in the county, they don't know what we're paying in the downtown. They don't know what we're producing out of the county. My friends that live out here in Fairview, you know, they think they're paying a lot of taxes, but they're not paying a lot compared to what we're paying. So, we're all in this corporation together. We all need to see how this economic model works together. So, Austin, we did y'all... Or them, down in Travis County, four years ago. This is Travis County. Can you guess where downtown Austin is? What was fun is, we had all this other data that we don't have access to in North Carolina, like this is the booze sales for six-county metro region. They drink a lot downtown, you can obviously see. We were sort of surprised by the South Congress people. They drink a lot, too. This is the hotel transactions. Downtown's killing it. And this is retail. This sort of surprised us. For one, this is illegal in North Carolina to pull retail data, so it was kind of nice to get it in Texas. But this is the mall zone. So, that spike right here, this is the domain. So, what's crazy about this is, think about what downtown has the burden to carry. It not only has retail stuff, but it's also got office, residential, government buildings, city buildings, county buildings, state buildings, churches. It's got all of this other stuff, and it's still highly productive from a retail standpoint. It's not just Austin. We've seen this in other places, Syracuse, New York, Nashville, that those properties in the downtown, that economic activity is incredibly productive, once you take a look at it. And we tell people, like, "Don't... Just get past your biases for a second." When we showed the Syracuse model to the Syracuse folks, the director of the Downtown Association, this little spike right here is a six-story mall. He's like, "There's no way. My daughter shopped at that mall. She drops $200 a month." It's like, "Yeah, what do you... You ate lunch today downtown. What did you spend?" He's like, "$12." I said, "Multiply that times 20." He said, "Oh, my God, I spend more than my daughter." I'm like, "Yeah, data. Look at it." So, one acre of BD Riley's... Now, again, these are old numbers from 2014, would equal the 20-acre Walmart. Now, remember the trajectory on that Walmart. It's going to be depreciating, so I bet you those numbers have pulled away from each other today. If you had two acres of the Stephen F. Austin that was built 100 years ago, it would equal the 172 South Park Meadows Mall. I asked them, I said, "Where's the park and this thing?" It appeared, but anyway. So, yeah, we've done this all across the country. There's a couple of things that stand out. We did West Palm Beach, Florida. You can obviously tell where the ocean is in this image. But what's crazy is, I tell people, "Don't believe your eyes until you see the data." And these are two buildings a block away from each other, and the building on Main Street on the left is 10.5 million an acre. The skyscraper on the right is only 9.2 million an acre. A short building is more productive than a tall building. We also pulled all of the Donalds Real Estate, just for the heck of it. The Donalds pulling about $400,000 an acre, which is actually less productive than the poorest neighborhood in downtown. When I showed this to city council, they're like, "That's not right." And I'm like, "Correct. It's not right." But this is what's in the data, right? Don't hate the player, hate the game. Understand the game, and it's your game, right? I don't... Don't fault Walmart. I don't fault the Donald for this. Understand the economics. So, we've done this all across the country, New Zealand, Australia, Canada, and it's real simple. This is the simplest way of looking at it. For every dollar of county taxes, somebody out in the county is paying to a county. Their brother and sister in the city is paying about five times that to the same county. Here's the Walmart. Here's the mall. Here's a two-story building. Here's a three-story building. Here's a six-story building. As you stack those stories, you're essentially growing your wealth. And it's not a proportional growth. It's an exponential growth upward. It's kind of crazy. So, we did you all really simple on your taxes. North Carolina taxes are kind of dumb. We just have market value, gets a reduction. Multiply it times tax rate, you're done. For y'all, you have taxable value of $100,000 in commercial and residential. They pay about 57 mills to the city, about 42 mills to the county. You actually pay less to a county than your city taxes. That's kind of rare. Mostly on the East Coast, we pay more to the counties than to the city. But from a valuation standpoint, there's a reduction in residential that is actually discounted down numerous different policies that go through your residential. So, it's, let's say, on average, about 40% of the value of commercial. So, here's your total value of Williamson County, and you can see the hotspots down here. When you look at it as a total value map, yeah, that's the big parcels. Here's value per acre. Here's the whole county in 3D. And you can see some... You can see downtown Georgetown popping up here, as well as downtown Round Rock, and then, y'all are kind of flat. You're hot. hot, you've got a lot of reds. Here's your city, total value, value per acre, kind of mutes out, right? Here is the county, here's the city in 3D. There's a blob over here of what's in Travis County. We went ahead and ran the numbers of that. We didn't model it because we didn't want to get all of Travis County's data set, it's just, there's too much information there. But we just ran the parcel data on this. Your average for, what your community is in Williamson County, you're averaging about $273,000 an acre. Your average of what's in Travis County of you all is only $167,000. That's the productivity difference between the two. And it may be, it may be mind-blowing because you have some really large properties over there that are very valuable, but again, they're really large properties, so they're, on a per-acre basis, it's not as productive. You still have all those miles of pipe and everything to pay for. So back to the Williamson County side, here's your 3D model. This is the old town, total value, value per acre. There's not a whole lot going on in your old town, just yet. And then the TIF area is up over here, this is the project area up right there. So here's the project area of the TIF. Just because we always run simple diagnostics like this, I want you to know your taxable and non-taxable. Your county's about 7% non-taxable, which is a little low. Typically, counties are somewhere around 18%. Your city's about 11% non-taxable, which is about average for a city your size that doesn't have a university in it or something. And your old town's about 18%. Asheville's 44% non-taxable, but we have city buildings and county buildings, we're much larger of a city. And your TIF area is about 18% non-taxable. Now, there is one error in here that we don't quite know what's going on, but this is the hospital project. This should probably be green, but we even ran the numbers on that building that's out there. It's only about $100,000 an acre, $140,000 an acre of value for that. So back to you all, your city is a portion of your county, right? It's about 2% of the county's footprint, you all pay about 7% of the county's taxes. That's a 1 to about, let's call it 4 ratio of productivity. Your old town is a portion of your city, is about 2% of the footprint, 5.5% of the value. That's actually negative, goes, you're going backward in value, which is not good. Some simple examples of buildings, here's your HEB plus, pulling about half a million an acre of value. And I'll use that as a control subject and stick it down here on the lower left, just to show it, so you can see it in comp, or comparable, that Goodwill's about 700,000, your Lowe's is about 3/4 of a million, and your Kohl's is the big one, at about $1 million an acre of value. And to put that in context, that's actually less than this by about three times, this is three times the productivity of the Kohl's. Your houses, or this, we just grabbed this one on Frethered Drive, at about 3 million an acre. Now you get into some of these buildings, this is the DFD Architects, which is about, just behind this building here, is coming in at 3.6 million an acre. And then this is your top producer, at 3.8 million. This is the most productive building in your community, right now. So this is what your bar chart looks like. Taking those same products and putting them on the bar chart, you can see your commercial stuff in red, this is the Kohl's right here, blue stuff is residential, and this is the senior housing over here. And just because we had the county, we went ahead and just added in what we find in Georgetown and Round Rock, that's their downtown buildings compared to you all. When you mix those uses and add multi-stories, you start to see that bump, right? So on Main Street in Georgetown, they're starting at 9 million an acre, and escalating up to Gumbos in Georgetown is at 12 million an acre. So what's kind of perplexing about this, and something to ponder, is think of who built these buildings. Think of these people that built that. The winery at 5 million an acre, that two-story building at 9 million an acre, that has been in the community's portfolio for over 100 years, producing this kind of density of wealth. 11 million, 12 million on Gumbos on the right, this is Round Rock, 12s, 12 millions, 9 millions. And we found this little picture, and it really made us, gave us some sense of pause, that that building on the left at $11 million of acre that's in this picture was built by people that had technology called horses, right? Sometimes we tend to overthink real estate, or tend to think that we know what's going on without really taking a step back and considering all of the options in there. So two acres of the building on the left would equal the 46-acre HEB. Less than one acre of the Burger University Building would equal, or the Lockit Building would equal Kohl's, the seven-acre Kohl's. So as you consider this decision, and you think about the density, yes, you're going to be getting wealth, but you also have to think about the trajectory of time with this project. So this is the Northline project. Here it is in context. This isn't going to happen all at once, so we had to measure it as it would fill in logically, from a marketing, from a market standpoint. So Phase 1 would bring it up to about $182 million of value. Phase 2 is about 367 million. Phase, full phase would be about, pretty close to a billion dollars worth of value when it's all said and done. So here's your site today, this is Phase 1. And so your average value for that area is going to be going up to about 2.4 million. When you do Phase 2, it bumps up to 4.8 million, and when you get into full phase, you're talking 9.5 million. And it peaks out, at some of them, at $69 million of value per acre. So there they all are in context. Now this drew up several questions for us, was we were doing the analysis, what do you do around this thing? How do you measure it? Looking at your peers, Georgetown and Round Rock, and you can see their downtowns, and you can see what you're going to be adding right there is value, it kind of dwarfs everything. But you're, you know, the statistics are all there, and I have a hard time doing all of the numbers while I'm talking, so, and it's also a lot of information to grasp. We'll have this as a PDF file for you all to go through and filter through. But let me get on to the high points. So back to the productivity, here's where it currently is. It barely shows up as a footprint in the county, it barely shows up in value, it's actually not good in value, it's actually negative in value for the county, but when you add that project in, you actually balloon it up from 0.8 to 5.5. That's a very accelerated productivity that you get to the county. So the county should be pretty happy that you're doing this. And then from a city perspective, it's 14% of your footprint, 3% of your value today, let's call it 4% of your value, that's a 1 to minus 14 ratio, it's actually negative in value. And when you add the project in, it balloons up to 24% or 1.7. 1.7 doesn't feel a lot, but remember, you're coming from minus 14 up to that, so that's a really big jump in productivity. I mean, you can see it from the picture, basically. So your TIF is really, is actually, or TIRS, is really kind of fascinating. Typically, what happens with a tax increment project is this whole quadrant would be light blue, baby blue, where you basically fold that TIF into the site. We've seen this with other cities. What you all did that was kind of interesting is that you split it in half, and you're absorbing, you're actually getting some money as this thing grows. So you're folding some of that into your pocket, you're pulling it out of the general fund, you're actually growing with the project, which is really cool and commendable. So when you look at it, we kind of tried to find a way to graphically show that to you. Eventually, in 2038, it's going to bump up to full value when it's fully constructed, but for the time being, you're essentially going to be harvesting, your tax base is going to be growing up on the inside of that. So we kind of showed that, where the glass tower stuff is that recycling of the taxes back into the project area, right? So there's a duality there. You're getting some money for your general fund, while some project money's going into the streets, which is cool. Just for fun, we went ahead and threw Cedar Park on there. Like, what if you were to say to me, "Joe, look, this is crazy. If we just let the market handle this and we get boxes, what's going to happen?" And this is going to, this is the physical difference between the two in the financial world. So basically, we figured it'd probably average at a value-per-acre basis at about, let's call it half a million, and your peak would be 1.5 million an acre. This is what you're getting by comparison. You're going from half a million an acre of value to well over $7.5 million of value per acre, which is a sizable productivity jump. And you can see the peak, or the total taxable value, there would be about 60 million with this, well, this project's close to 733 million, which is a tremendous investment. So that money that you're putting in somewhere around 18 to 20 million of recycled tax increment into the project is essentially yielding hundreds of millions of dollars of productivity. So just for fun, we went ahead and added you into your context, so this is your county. And then notice here, for your county, you know, you're not in isolation. Williamson County is not just floating around in the sea. Y'all start at $4 million where your purple start. We had to dilute you down because we brought Travis in, or the old 2015 Travis, the purple starts at 193 million, so here's what that looks like. And it looks like a nuclear reactor going off. But there's a lot that you're tied into on this. For one, you're exporting all of your people. So your residents go somewhere else to work, and with that, they send that commerce there too, because that office and commercial buildings are actually worth something. So you can actually start to look at along the chain of pearls, along the transit line, to say, "Can we harvest stuff?" So we have all the data for that. Here's what you look like now, compared to your peer set, here's what you're going to look like with that, with the Northline project. So you're essentially building that spike that other transit areas have. From a market standpoint, you know, lots of times I hear from people, it's like, "Well, you can't make me live there." It's like, "Well, this isn't about you." Back to that question I asked about the 400-square-foot apartment, there is part of your market that wants that stuff. According to the National Association of Realtors, 3/4 of your market is going to want to have the single-family detached product. That's the majority of your market, but there's this portion here of about 24% of your market, that's about 10,000 units of high-density stuff, the people that live in condos or townhouses, things like this in Georgetown, or this, this is, these are townhouses in Massachusetts and Boston. What's crazy about a lot of the Sun Belt is we just don't have the history of building townhouses like the older parts of America, but when you look at these things, that townhouse right there in the corner is $161 million an acre of value, which is ridiculously productive. Now remember, you all are peaking out at 3 million an acre, and this has been in that portfolio for 200 years. So when you think about the area around that context, around that spike, think about how you build out. So just for the heck of it, we threw Cedar Park around the donut, around the mountain here, and that's going to be a total value of about 1.8 billion of this donut here. So you could go from 1.2 to 1.8. This is, we just went ahead and added the Georgetown townhouses, and look at how big it got, 5 billion. These are just townhouses. Now you can do more than that, you can have a plan to do other things. So this is all, as you talk about how do we use this land, how do we leverage this investment, do think about how you expand the pie and what you can get out of that. Retail sales, our state, these are, this is a chart, it's a nerdy chart about all different states and how they operate at the local level. This is Texas here. You all got a little bit of retail, I think it's about 24% of your total revenue. Here's your current productivity of retail. Now it was hard for us to calibrate because you don't have a whole lot of stuff that would be in this project yet, so we did some estimates, but we think this is where you'll be with the retail production by comparison. And when we talk about smaller retails, we have to, again, check your biases to the curb. Well, we have got the data, like Durango, Colorado, this is their property tax model, that's downtown, this is the mall, the Home Depot, and all of that stuff down here, the big box stuff. Here's retail. We find with the small retailers, they kill it on a per-square-foot basis, particularly since the internet has brought a lot of retail in. Those smaller purchases, the more boutique stuff is more desirable, and you tend to turn more sales. This is total productivity, jobs. Let me just kind of skip through this part here, because this is a little bit too nerdy to talk about. But I'll bring you a story of Tim and Peter. They own these two shops on Main Street, a bookstore, and a, this is really a coffee shop, but Tim also sells kitchen stuff. But on the right is the footprint difference between the retail versus Walmart. This is the property tax produced out of those two businesses versus the Walmart, retail sales, jobs. So we find when we can measure it and stack things apples to apples, we see that these small entrepreneurs are actually ridiculously productive. Five times the productivity of retail sales, what is that, 15 times the property tax sales? Now let's ask the next economic question. Which side of that ledger, the blue side or the gray side, who's hiring the local merchant, the local ad executive, the local attorney? Who's sponsoring a Little League team? Who's volunteering for the planning commission? This is how those decisions matter. Those small spaces actually are ridiculously productive, they just don't have the time to advocate for themselves. And again, this isn't about hating on Walmart, this is about understanding the dynamics of economics. And there's some weird stuff out there. This is the weirdest thing by far. This is Cheyenne, Wyoming, for a second. So when you have dirt, and you have buildings on top of the dirt, we can take the buildings and turn them off, take them off the dirt, and you have the value of the dirt just sitting out there. So this is dirt per acre in Cheyenne, Wyoming. I was presenting this to the community there, and I was like, "What's going on out here? This neighborhood's dirt is all the same, but when you come down here, you see that this is blue, which is $15,000 an acre, and when you cross the street, it jumps up to $40,000 an acre. Same zoning category, same fire district, same school district. How by crossing the street does land double in value?" And as I was presenting to the community, the assessor raises her hand, and she just yells out, "You don't understand." And I was like, "Try me, what am I missing?" She goes, "The more land you have, the lower the value." The mayor just about spat coffee out of his nose, he was laughing so hard, I'm like, "Hold on a second. I get more of your stuff, you give me a discount?" She goes, "Yeah, that's our standard." So this property here has three miles of streets around it, this fellow's got 200 feet. She goes, "Yeah, we don't count infrastructure as part of the value." I said, "So your investment into the dirt doesn't get recouped?" She goes, "No, it's not part of our standard. This property has more commerce on it, more commerce means more theft, more fire calls because of car accidents." She goes, "We don't count any of that. The more land you have, the lower the value, that's our standard." So the reason why I was at the assessor's conference was to ask them, I'm like, "Where'd y'all get this stuff from? Did Moses deliver it to you? It makes no economic sense." Their magazine is called Fair and Equitable, so I asked them, I'm like, "Is this fair? Is it equitable?" And they're like, "No, it's not." I'm like, "Where'd this come from?" They're like, "We don't know." So realize this, when we talk about market forces, we tend to see subsidies like, "We're having a meeting tonight, I'm going to come in and ask for something." That's indeed a subsidy, that conversation, that exchange. But by how our policies are drafted, there are subsidies baked into the model, and just account for it. So we did your model, and sure enough, this is how it plays out. Notice the productivity of the smaller parcels that are commercial next to the larger parcels. I don't know who this guy is right here, but they're being absolutely screwed, but this is, you know, these are humans making decisions, you're doing modeling, you might want to find this person, but, you know, it just, I just want, we produce this stuff so you could see it, so you can see that it's not, there's not a rational action behind here, you just have to be conscious of this. So policies can hurt you. I'm running out of time here, so I'm going to skip toward the end. You know, we did a project, this is another one of the things you should be careful of, how you're accounting. If you follow your CAFR standards, if I'm a developer and I give you roads, it's not a gift, that's a liability into the future, but how your CAFR standards are written, it hides it. You've got your revenues, you've got your expenses. So I own a business, I've got a computer, my computer depreciates, my car depreciates, my house depreciates. I can sell those to you. Can y'all pick your roads up and can you sell them to Georgetown? No. So cash flow then, this is Lafayette, Louisiana, this is the cash flow model of the debt load of all the roads that they own in red, and blue is their actual revenue. As you build your community out, realize what you're going to be leaving legacy for your grandkids. Grandparent Lafayette is looking backward now at their past decisions, realizing they needed to change their model because this isn't getting any better into the future. Blue is their revenue, red is their liability. When you're that broke, what do you do? You go out and get a bond. So they got bonds, the bonding company comes in and skims off the top and takes half their revenue. So this is a model of their financial situation, if you took the whole city and floated it in a lake, red is their debt load, and all of the cost of running a city, green is what people are actually paying into it. So we made it geographically specific. Everybody's choosing on where to live, what does it cost the community? Net your expenses and your revenues, that's what it looks like. Here it is in 3D. When you drop it on the floor, this is what it looks like. So we told them, we said, "This whole quadrant here, that's how net-negative it is." And they told me, "The market really wants to be there." I said, "Yeah, that's what you're paying the market to move there. Just account for that, make sure you can afford it. You might need more green stuff to compensate for that." And just to show you where they've built themselves into a corner, they were 33,000 people in 1950, five feet of pipe per person, 2.4 fire hydrants. They grew their population to 121,000. You're on a trajectory of the same path. What will you be by 2040? You know? They grew their feet of pipe per person to this, fire hydrants per thousand in that. 350% growth in population, 1,000 and 2,000% growth in liability. And they told me they got rich, so we measured that. Their household income, adjusted for today's dollars, did grow, they're actually richer than Asheville. But it's only 160% growth in revenue. 160% growth in revenue, 1,000 and 2,000% growth in liability. And that stuff is a ticking time bomb, you just don't feel it until 40 years out, because a road doesn't break overnight. So this is all stuff that goes back to Nixon, basically. The Richard Nixon administration published the cost of sprawl in 1973 when we were going through the first gas crisis. They were telling us this stuff doesn't make sense, and we have habits. Habits are hard to break, and particularly with our land use. So let me kind of jump ahead and close with some points. When we talk about the market, it's really, we have to be conscious of what's in the policies to drive the market to happen a certain way, but you make it as a conscious decision and a conscious act. When you don't have money for the Greenway, or the art teacher, or the dancing traffic cop, I don't think you have dancing traffic cops yet. It's not that you don't have that money, it's just that you've buried it in other places. So my city's worth more than the Spurs were, about, you know, 24 Spurs. Y'all are eight Spurs as a corporation. So I can guarantee you, Peter Holt knows Kawhi Leonard's towel bill, I can tell you the cups in our nightclub cost five cents a pop. Why do I know that? We need to stay in business. So as you look to your community, again, be agnostic about this, your accountant doesn't care if you buy a boat. Your accountant cares if you can afford a boat, right? Kent and I went to had lunch today, and we went to Mutant's, and this is all about choice versus want, and what you have to do for the long term. And I really wanted the chicken fried steak, but I ended up getting the chicken, because I told you about my history, right? I have to make this choice for the long term, and I was kind of upset about the chicken fried, it's award-winning apparently, but I couldn't eat it. So think about this decision, think about it in time, and I'll give you one book that I recommend to everybody, Good to Great by Jim Collins. Remember, you're a $5 billion business. It's tough to make business decisions. I love this quote, "If you don't confront the brutal facts, they're going to confront you, the facts matter." The fundamental issue here is, the more inefficient the land use, the more it costs you over time, the more stuff you buy, the more it costs you. When you look at these numbers, it's, to me, it's pretty obvious that that investment can cultivate tremendous amounts of wealth. You're missing that downtown that other communities built over time. You basically skipped a generation. So how do you make that happen? And we recommend doing the math. So, thank you.
Joe, stay up, I'm sure we're going to have several questions. We've got about 10 or 12 minutes, counsel, we can do this. We'll obviously have more discussion when we get to the agenda item, but is there any questions for Mr. Menocosi?
Well, in this picture here, what exactly did you do for the Cedar Park comp?
We went into, we went right into their data set and grabbed those buildings out and dropped them in, and we grabbed the ones that were the highest producers out there.
Okay.
So like a Costco, or whatever, whatever's going on in there, strip malls and malls, it's a lot of retail commerce, but they don't, again, they're just boxes.
It's more of the traditional boxes, that's what they have there, so, okay.
Yeah, there's a reason why they're so low in value. One is per square foot, they're really cheap buildings, but second, you saw that, the methodology of the more land you have, the lower the value, that's a discount that's baked into it. The third is, think about how you use real estate. So if I just put a bunch of asphalt out there, the assessor's going to go out there and count the square footage of asphalt and say, "Okay, this is a really cheap investment into the ground." So there's very little value there. So there's a perversity in the fact that when we require parking, we're essentially pushing down the value of land, because surface parking doesn't have a whole lot of value, but it's needed. Now the road doesn't care that's in front of it, the road's $9 linear foot for that road. So the broader the frontage, the more road consumption, that's actually a subsidy given to the project.
Yeah. But when you're also assessing all of this and figuring it out, with the roadways, we know down the road that actually the roadways and the infrastructure winds up being a liability for us, because we've got to repair those. Do you factor that into this at all? Is this just the buildings and stuff?
This is just showing you your money, where it's coming from. We didn't get into the costing side, but I showed you the Lafayette one as an example.
Yes, yes, I did that, that was it, okay.
Do you have anywhere in your presentation that we skipped through, data that shows Do you have anywhere in your presentation that we skipped through data that shows the difference in, since you brought up parking, the vertical parking and the impact that has?
From a vertical parking standpoint, I'll just, I'll just skip ahead to this one. This is Peoria, Illinois. They, they told us they had a parking problem, so we measured it. Here's downtown Peoria, here's their water and grass, here's your streets and sidewalks, here's all the surface parking lot that they have in Peoria, and here's your buildings. Now, what's scary is, like, this whole building's a parking deck, that's a parking deck, this is a parking deck, that's a parking deck. And so when you have buildings and parking, the assessor's going out there and pricing these things. So buildings are about 35 bucks a square foot in Peoria for all of the buildings. That's the parking. The road doesn't care.
Mm-hmm.
Right? So that's $9 a linear foot. So the reason why in all of our models, the spikes drop off as soon as you leave downtown because most downtowns have a choker collar of surface parking. Now, if you made parking decks, that demand that's there, you essentially can turn it into a building that's stacked so it can be several times the footprint in one spot. So you can use that other land now that's available for buildings and grow your, so parking decks cost money, but they also harvest the ability to have tax base all around it. We did a project in Asheville where we did a parking deck with the city and wrapped the whole thing with housing and a hotel. And basically, our attitude was, why should the city just go off and build a deck and we lose all of that tax base? Let's put taxes around it and then also drive consumers to it. So in Asheville, we bond our decks at 25 years, but the city pays them back in eight years. So from year eight onward, it's free money. So think of it that way. It's like, they use, they use that revenue to pay for mass transit. Now, there's other things we'd recommend that they spend that money on, but we can't control Asheville. They, they do some silly things sometimes. But as long as our community's getting wealth out of it, that's cool. So this is a thing to think about, is can you harvest that land? You're in a cooperative corporation, whether you like it or not. You know, you're, you're in it to make this thing function as a corporation. The private sector will be building on the land, but you're doing all the infrastructure loading. When you look at the burbs in Peoria that's flat because it's mostly parking, so we went ahead and did the whole county that way. This is the whole county's footprint. If you shove all the buildings in the county, take all the buildings and just look at the vacuum cleaner, just put them all side by side, that's the footprint of all the buildings in Peoria County. This is the parking. This is the roads. When you look at the numbers, you actually have more land dedicated to parking than buildings, which is insane. This is the reason why Peoria's in a lot of trouble, right? This is their, everything else. So when you look at the money, let's do it on a per square mile basis. They're getting a billion dollars of revenue out of the buildings, you're only getting 40 million out of the parking, and then this is a liability, $250 million a mile, and this is everything else. City after city I go to, a lot of them aren't even looking at this stuff. I'm like, it's hiding in plain sight. This is stuff you own, look at it. They have enough roads to go from Peoria, Illinois to Vancouver, British Columbia, that's how much roads they have, which is insane.
So do you have the data to tell us in our, this little section, our TOD, which is going to be our downtown, to tell us how the numbers are going to work out with the streets and the roads and the infrastructure? So we can have an idea maybe of what we need to set aside for that in the future?
Yeah, from a reserve account standpoint, we didn't do a reserve account on this. So, and I'll tell you, like, these surface parking lots aren't going to give you hardly anything in here. But even with that, you can see how much those buildings are punching above their weight because you're adding those multiple stories there. And, and to be fair, if you're going to do that for this area, you should do that accounting for the whole city to see where all of your liabilities are. But that wasn't part of our scope.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, that does. Thank you.
I just, not really a question, but more of a comment. This is incredibly eye-opening. I think when we look at, you know, where we've brought Leander thus far, I think we've put a lot of the key points in place, but boy, you've really just laid the future. And I would highly suggest anyone at home to watch this again from the very beginning because this is a very valuable presentation and...
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have the kids' book scanned if you want a copy of it.
I love the kids' book.
It is a pretty cool book.
It's actually equal parts exciting and depressing because it's, why don't we learn this anymore?
Civics.
Yeah.
Anyone else, counsel? Scan it.
Thank you. In your modeling that you did, is that phased out or is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, this is phase one, phase two. The colors might not show all that well, but you can see, like, first the spine happens.
Right.
And, and then there's like a leg that comes off up here. And then there's a lot of parking, but then, then this get, the parking gets filled in back here. And then you see the townhouses in this area kind of grows out on the west side. And then this boundary comes out over here. And then this is all green field out there, but then that gets filled in eventually.
And so my concern is we're going very dense over there, and I want to make sure that there's enough parking for those who live there and those we hope work there and shop there. And so how is that accounted for if you're trying to reduce parking?
From my standpoint on parking, we weren't looking at that. We were assuming that that was part of the plan. That's more of a question for the developer. We were looking at putting, from, from your perspective, what's your cash flow that you're getting out of it? So in the case of Asheville, when we built that parking deck and we put, I want to like, I need pictures, but when we built the housing and the hotel on it, it was really funny, the city's response. First of all, it was a public-private partnership, it was in the city's master plan. We could have just sold the land free and clear to the hotel and walked away, but we wanted to help the city do this. One of my friends who's a planner exclaimed to me, you know, Joe, that was great, that project only took four years to get signed. And I was like, Sasha, do you know how many human beings my wife and I could produce in four years? Five, we could make five people. Four years is not fast. You know, we, we had to suffer through all of that. Then we still had to find a contractor, get financing in the middle of a recession, which was unbelievable. And then we had to build the darn thing. But when we sat with the city, they actually wanted us to reserve spaces to make our housing work. And we said, no. No, we want to, we don't want to put that cost into the project because we want to have lower-cost housing. Because if we have to buy a space in that parking deck, it's going to cost us $28,000 to $36,000 and we're going to fold that into the cost of the housing. Now, what if one of our tenants doesn't want to have a, a car? Why should they have to pay for that cost? Secondly, if we buy that space, we're going to put reserved on it and it's going to be privatized. We'd much rather you all have parking passes, and then if our tenants want a space, they'll buy a parking pass when they drive away to go out on the Blue Ridge Parkway or go to work or whatever. You can sell that space again. This is the reason why that's cash flowing so fast. Because that parking, when you share it...
So are you suggesting the city build the parking structure?
Oh, I'm, I'm just giving you that model.
Okay.
You know, I'm not, I'm, we are just, we were given this project to say, what's its worth, what's its future value, how's it going to cash flow for you? And we're just accepting it as is without design critique or any other kind of thing. But that's an option that could be on the table if you want to choose it. But I would leave, I would defer that to the developer and have you all talk about it. I don't know your capacity to do that.
Thank you.
Joe, we appreciate you being here and giving us this presentation. It's very, very helpful at this point. Hopefully you can stick around in case we have some additional questions later in the meeting. And we're going to go ahead and adjourn this portion. We're going to take about a five-minute break and then we're going to start as close to seven as we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, everyone. Today is Thursday, June the 7th, 2018. The time is 7:05 PM. This is the regular city council meeting, city of Leander, Texas. You're all welcome. We're glad that you're here. If you'll please rise for our invocation. Gash, Pro Tim Siler, lead us in prayer, please.
Lord, thank you so much for this wonderful day that you've given us, Lord. Thank you for the opportunity to meet here tonight with the citizens of Leander and with staff. And Lord, just be with us, help us to make right decisions and help us to think long and hard about the decisions and how they affect every resident in the city, Lord. Lord, just continue to be with our police and fire and, and support them as they, as they support us. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pleasance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now the Texas flag?
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you very much. You may be seated. Scrap tree, please call the roll.
Councilmember Andrea Navarrete.
Present.
Councilmember Michelle Stevenson.
Here.
Councilmember Shannon Shepherd.
Here.
Councilmember Christine Settequest.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Jeff Siler.
Here.
Councilmember Marcy Cannon.
Here.
Mayor Christopher Fielder.
President, we do have full council in a quorum. We are eligible to do business. We'll move to item number six, staff comments. Do we have any this evening?
No, sir.
Great. We'll move to item number seven, citizens' comments. This is the time where you can address the council for an item that is not on the agenda. We do have two people that have signed up to speak, Mr. Mike Sanders. Sanders, if you'll come up and state your name and address for the record, the clock will come on and you will have three minutes.
Good evening, council. My name is Mike Sanders and I live at 1016 West South Street in Leander. And this is my first time being here since the new councilwomen were sworn in. I want to congratulate you. Very happy that you're, you're here tonight. One thing I would like to talk about, there's actually a couple of things I'd like to talk about tonight, but one thing is the, the $15 million bond and that is on the table tonight, which is, right now, we owe 91...
Mr. Sanders?
Please, sir, this is my three minutes.
No, sir, Mr. Sanders, this item...
We owe...
Mr. Sanders, you're now disrupting a public meeting.
I am not disrupting.
Chief?
I have every right to speak.
We're going to take an adjourn.
Give an explanation. This is for anything that the citizens want to talk about. No, I have several things I want to talk about.
Okay, so the, the ones that are on the agenda, you sign up and talk about those.
Okay, well, I'll skip that, what's on the agenda, and I'll talk about other things. Thank you. Your hostility is noted, sir. So one of the things I would like to talk about is...
Mr. Sanders, if you'll hold on just a second. I'm going to run this meeting, okay? So just hold on just a second. So at this time, we are going to re-adjourn, reconvene, 7:09, we are reconvened. You will have three minutes. I'll restart the clock to speak on items that are not on this agenda. If I ask you to stop, I'll be happy to give you that time back. But if you continue to interrupt, I'm going to cut you off. Thank you, Mr. Sanders.
Okay. So let me talk about something that happened here a few months back. Our city council decided to make a hostile annexation of thousands of acres of private property. This was done just days before our state legislator, well, after our state legislature had, had made the practice illegal, but just days before the law took effect. What I think our, our council did at that time was dirty. I, I think it was dirty, you know? And, and I, I think you guys must have felt dirty doing it. I really do. Knowing that something was illegal, the law just hadn't quite taken effect yet, but you went ahead and did it anyway. And I think that a lot of citizens, when they, when they read about that, at the time, I wasn't on Facebook. And Facebook, it really seems to be the only, the only source for, for current news here in Leander. And so I didn't know what was going on until I read it in the, in the Community Impact, in the newspaper. And I was disgusted at what our, our, our council had done to the owners of this private property and forcibly annexing their property, property into our city limits against their will. That, that's one thing that, that, that our council did. Another thing that our council did is, is in this YMCA deception, where I saw a post on, on Facebook where our city manager wrote in on Facebook that he was intentionally trying to hide the fact on the ballot that the money was going to be given to the YMCA. And he wrote in this post on Facebook that the purpose for the deception was so that the Securities and Exchange Commission would not know what was being done. What kind of, what kind of city are we running here that, that we would do something like that? We would deceive our citizens? I wasn't on Facebook at that time, so I didn't know. I voted in favor of that, of that bond. But I did so with believing that we were going to construct a, a community center that, that was going to be, belong to our city. I had no idea that the intent was to give all that money over to a private organization free. I had no idea that, and that's why I voted for it. It was a deception. The third deception, I've been told not to talk about during this three minutes, so I'll talk about it later on in the set, in, in the, in the meeting. But it's a, it's a, it's a continuation of the same sort of deception that I think you guys should, should, should reject. You know, you guys should show integrity and, and you should care about citizen input more than, than, than I believe that our council has in the past. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. John Handy Bosma? Mr. Bosma, if you'll state your name and address, you have three minutes.
John Handy Bosma, 1917, Cross Draw Trail, Leander, Texas. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, both the people who are staying and the new. First of all, I just want to say, Mr. Mayor, thank you for that amazing display. I understand you've been stepping down. Maybe there's a sheriff position. Seems like there's a new sheriff in town learning things, so thank you for that. I just also want to say before I start substantively, I take exception. I can vouch for the character of, of the city manager, a man on whom I have agreed with, disagreed, disagreed on many topics and agreed on little, but who is without a doubt not deserving of the attacks that we just heard. So what I would like to talk to you about today, as I do this by three people, is about the issue of trust. An ongoing election is still happening and we have three new members. Congratulations. And the community has largely, because of the things like the Facebook posts that just somebody just talked about, been torn asunder. And the question is, how, given all this, can we re-establish the trust of all of the citizens? And I just want to point out that, that trust has to be earned. That isn't something that's just granted freely because of the experience of, of some of our citizens. We have in this election had a mother, had police called on her in Cedar Park, and the CPS called on her for teaching her young daughter and showing her some Facebook, how to participate in politics on Facebook. We've had citizens threatened with prosecution by a citizen of this, of Leander. And I just want to say that Mr. Dick, and just to be clear, Mr. Dick is the, the prosecutor, he's the DA, right? I'm not talking about anybody else. He, he, he's not going to go forward with this, but these people were actually threatened with being imprisoned. And so it's a really divisive atmosphere that we face here, and there've been a lot of really tough experiences. And so it's really important for you, regardless of your support that you've had in the past, to show that you serve all of the citizens of Leander. It's kind of like what happened with, with my daughter at school. There were some kids who got the wrong lessons from their parents, the real outliers. They were pushing my daughter down. My daughter's biracial. They were pushing her down, day after day after day after day. And, you know, at the school, I could have just trusted them, but, you know, it happened a little bit more. They intervened and they proved to me that they cared and they stopped that, that, that from happening. And my daughter, you know, has excelled in school since then. They proved it to me that they care. And you have the opportunity to prove it. I look forward to the day when many of the people who have opposed you can, can in good faith say they trust you. But in order to do that, you have to show that you can go beyond the bounds of what got you elected and reach out to other people and show your independence. It's not about voting as a block, it's about voting your conscience and serving everyone. And I really hope that you have the opportunity to, to prove that to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Tessa, I'm sorry, I'm going to mess your last name up, so why don't you just tell me what it is?
My name is Tessa Schmidenski. I'm with the Pardell Selectric Cooperative here again. For, I was thinking today on my drive up, probably about the seventh or maybe eighth or ninth year, this time of year, we come around to formally invite you, the council, as well as all the citizens of Leander to participate and attend our upcoming annual membership meeting. So I have just a few cards here that I'll leave with Ms. Crabtree as I leave the podium. I just wanted to tell you guys a little bit about it. This year, the meeting will start at 9:30 AM and it's going to be at the Smithson Valley High School. So it's a little bit out of your footprint or your area. But, you know, we've had it up in this area, the Leander ISD, for the last two years, I do believe. And so this is an opportunity for us to move it down south into the Spring Branch area. But we'd like to invite you to come nonetheless. Voting and door prize registration, I'm sorry, it's on Saturday, June 23rd. And voting and door prize registration will begin at 9 a.m. until 10:30. The meeting will start at 10:30. Between your arriving at nine o'clock and the meeting starting at 10:30, we'll have a celebration for PEC's 80th anniversary. So we're at a milestone year this year, so we're having what we call our historical party and a birthday party with some historical artifacts and birthday cookies. So we'd like you to attend that. At 9:30, we're having a mad science presentation, meeting starting at 10:30. And then after the meeting, from at 11, from 11:30 to 1:30, it's going to be family-friendly activities. So if you are interested in that, we invite you to attend. We also have some door prizes, which this year are a little bit different than usual. We have voting prizes. So if you vote in the election, which you should have your ballots, have, they should have arrived in the mail for you, you are eligible to win a Cub Cadet Zero Turn Riding Lawnmower, Home Theater Package, iPad Pro, and some 150, one of 10, $150 bill credits. So you can, you're eligible to those, for those by voting and for registering at the event. So I'm just here to invite you and answer any questions you might have about that. And congratulations to all of you new members, and good luck to, since you guys have a lot going on. So good luck to you.
Yes, ma'am.
If you have any questions ever, feel free to let me know.
That's everyone I have signed up to speak with. Anyone else like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? Okay, hearing done, we're going to move to item number eight, recognitions, proclamations and visitors. We have a, a very special guest and a recognition that I want to do this evening. This young lady was born in Tapachico? Tompico? I'm close. It's two completely different areas, but Tompico, Mexico. Came here as a Mexican national, legally, obviously. Married to one of our partner companies in the city, Chasco. Mr. Jonathan Escalante works for Chasco and is one of the ones helping to work on our new fire station. But we want to recognize his wife this evening, Beatrice Escalante. We're going to have you come on up. Can you come up here to the front for me? I know, I didn't tell you I was going to come up. You can go ahead and bring your family, that's fine. We'll, we'll take them too. But what is monumentous about this monumental, I mean, about this recognition is, in the last week, Beatrice just took her paperwork and became a U.S. citizen.
Woo!
We have a special recognition. This item was sponsored by myself and Councilmember Shepherd, and I'm going to have her read the recognition, and then we're going to come down and take a picture real quick with you as well. If you would please read that.
I, I couldn't help but think of you the whole time we were saying the pledge, because I guess that has a whole new significance to you, and I'm so excited for you. And Jonathan, we love you guys to death and are proud to do this for you. So, this certificate hereby honors Beatrice Escalante. Here begins the newest chapter of the rest of your life. May the pride and hope that you feel today stay in your heart forever. Welcome and congratulations on becoming a citizen of the United States.
Thanks.
You want to say anything? You want to say anything?
Oh, I'm a little nervous, but, um, thank you, and this is an honor to be part of this community and of this country, and I'm so proud of this. I mean, it has been years, and this is a long process, but finally...
He did it.
I made it.
He did.
We're going to make a big decision. Awesome. Congratulations, and again, we're very proud of you. We're going to move to our Chamber of Commerce mid-year update. Ask Ms. Bridget Bryant to come up. Ms. Bryant, how are you?
I'm great.
If you'll state your name and address, you'll only have three minutes also.
Bridget Bryant, 100 North Brushy. I do feel like I live there most days.
You're on the agenda, so we're good.
I honestly think I spend more time there than my own actual house, but it's a beautiful home, and I do love it. And I'm going to start today with the thank you for the space. So this will be our first update since we have that entire space, and it has been an incredible blessing for us. So thank you for allowing us to have that space and use that space, and we are going to do a lot of great work in it. And so I'm going to be a little bit random here today in that we've got lots of new things coming, and I just want to touch on a few of those things so that you are, I kind of want to keep you all informed of things that we're working on. And then, if there's a deep dive that you want or anything, I'll try to answer it tonight. If not, I'll be sure and get that information back to you. And so first, I just want to do a quick recap on the festival, Old Town Street Festival, just recently happened, another great success, another terrible weather, I don't know what it is. I'm still blaming Mark. I, I feel like, ever since Mr. Tummin's, while he's brought many...
Oh!
Yeah, uh-huh, uh-huh. Look, look. While he's brought all wonderful things to the city, since then, we have the most terrible weather luck, but we are hoping to turn that tide. Now, I will say, he did give us a great reprieve for the Christmas festival, and so I'm counting on him bringing that for this one that's here too. He says it's done, so. But I do, on a serious note, want to thank all of the people in the city that helped make that happen. So, of course, to Mr. Tummin's and his team, they are incredible. Also would like to thank our Police Department, our Fire Department, and our Public Works Department. They all put in so much effort to make these things happen. And then I will share some data with you back. On an average, we estimate that, based on the number of people that we had attending that festival, the number of vendors and an estimate of their sales based on prior year, year sales, that festival brought in $888,000 into the city. And so when you start thinking about the value, and that is on the most conservative numbers that you can use. We take numbers from the Texas Tourism Department, based on the Austin MSA, and that's the numbers that we use. Then we remove any hotel spending that they would normally incur in a festival day, because we don't have those yet. We do have lots of our vendors requesting hotels, though, so I'm very excited to be able to fill that first hotel, once we have it, with things just exactly like this. So we did see a growth this year over last year, which is exciting. So contrary to Facebook, that is, there was definitely a growth in numbers. We also have drone footage this year to actually estimate the population. During the concert, we estimated about 2,500 people were there, and by estimate, I mean, we actually counted every single one of them. And then for, we had the drone go at four different times throughout the festival, and so in any given hour of the festival, there's somewhere between 500 and 1,000 people. So throughout the entire time of the festival, we estimate that you're looking at somewhere between 10,000 and 15,000 people that come over the course of that entire day, day and a half of the festival. Again, this will be our fifth year next year, so lots of changes that, again, we're making, but we think we've got it just about down. And so very excited for that, in the progress of that event and all of the help, so a big thanks for that. On the tourism front, we are about, about, coming close to securing our very first large event that we're going to be bringing into Leander, and I can't announce it yet, but we are in the process of working on that contract right now. So it will be the very first one, and we're estimating that that event will bring about 9,000 people to the city over the course of three days. It's the first event that we're bringing people into the city that we didn't have to do as well, which is really exciting. So very excited to bring that to you as soon as we have that deal signed. We are working on the Christmas, Christmas festival, as I mentioned. Also, this year in our Leadership Leander class, which many of you have been a part of, we have 16 people, which is our highest number that we have ever had participate in that class. So we are very excited about our future leaders that we are able to produce through that program. Also, we are, for the very first time, in, the thing that I passed out to all of you, for those of you watching at home or in the audience, is our program of work. It is available on our website at leandercc.org. That program of work gives you an update of all of the goals that we set out for 2018 and where we are to date on those goals. One of the goals that you'll see on that program of works for the first time is workforce development. We, our board this year, when they convene, really wanted us to add more workforce development into our work. And so, one, we have partnered with SCORE, and you'll see those classes continuing, but also we're bringing a teacher externship program to Leander for the very first time. Leander ISD will have 22 teachers that participate this year. It is a grant that the chamber went out and applied for, and so we'll be paying those teachers for three days to go into businesses in Leander and around Leander to learn about the processes that are happening in that business and bring that back into the classroom. So it is an incredible program. It's the first time Leander's ever participated in it, and so we are very excited to be able to offer that. And so we've got teachers doing anything and everything that you can imagine as a part of that program. So it's a really big opportunity for us and for our students. And so each of those teachers is required to go back into the classroom, not only to their students, but also to their peers, and do peer training so that that information that they learned in the workforce can be brought back into the school. And so we have ag teachers, we have technology teachers, even math, science, anything and everything you can think of. And so that's a really neat new program. And with that, I would also like to, we have several of our Board of Directors and ambassadors in the audience today. And so, because there are so many of them here, I do want to take a minute just to recognize them, because I often get a lot of credit for this, which I very much appreciate, but really, it is our village that makes this community and this chamber so great. So if y'all will please stand and be recognized. With that, I'm going to open it up to what questions you might have.
Counsel?
Are you sure you won't give us a hint for the 9,000?
It will be something that you will really love to shop at. There's my hint.
I'm sure there's a, I'm sure there's a committee that she could volunteer to be on.
Absolutely, there is. I, I would love nothing more. Marcy's been on several of our committees in the past, so she knows exactly how we work. So she would, I'm sure, love to do that.
You want the inside scoop? Just go to work.
That's right. It's very easy. We can make it happen for anybody. Do y'all have any other questions? If you do have questions, I just want to open the door. We are very transparent and open to any and all. So welcome new council members. If either of you have questions, we look forward to answering them.
I got one question, I'm sorry.
Go for it.
What types of programming do y'all have for small businesses in Leander?
We have lots of programming for small businesses. So we do a couple of things. One, we have a partnership with SBA, so it depends, when you say small business, it depends, like, that's a big question. Because it could be, we have, I, we literally just, like, in this week, we'll just talk about this week. This week, I had a meeting with a brand-new small business who's wanting to open in Old Town. So we brought them in, had a meeting with them, talked to them about opportunities that are in Old Town, talked to them about the Old Town Grant, gave them, of course, Mark Willis's number, but we also set them up with SBA to get all of their paperwork in order. It's, it would be a women-owned business. So set them up with SBA to get all of their paperwork in, in order, and then also got them a SCORE mentor, just to be able to compare the market, because, for that particular thing, what they were doing. So we have all of that. We also did a SCORE training this year on QuickBooks. So this week, actually, we did that. So if you think about that from a small business, we have that type of thing. And then, right next week, we start Summer Nights, and so a lot of small businesses will participate in things like that. That's how Casa Costa started. So for those of you that don't know them, they're amazing, but they were a, wedding cakes is what they did out of their home. And one of the ways that they grew before finding this spot in Old Town, that everybody loves to go to, was participate in our festivals. And so they are a prime example of what you can see. We have a chef right now who's doing that exact same thing. You're going to see something new at the Christmas festival this year that's going to do that exact same thing, and so that's exactly what we do. But it, the answer to that question is, it depends on what you need. So if we have someone with a small business call us and say, I'm thinking about, we get this call almost every day, I'm thinking about opening a business in Leander, we say, tell us what you're wanting to do. Because depending on what they want to do, do you want to bake cookies, or are you starting a technology company? And it, so the answer to that question is, it depends on what you're doing. Then we try to set them up with mentors. Maybe they need financing, so we can find a banker for them. Maybe they need, who knows? Every day, it's something new. And by the way, anybody that wants to see is welcome to come down and just be in our office for a day and see what that's like, if you really want to know. We would, we've done that before, and we would open the doors to you. But yeah, I don't know if that really answers your question or not, Jeff. It's, the answer is, there's not a specific answer to that.
Sounds to me like you're pretty unlimited, pretty much, whoever wants it.
Yeah, it really depends on what you're...
They'll do everything you can to help facilitate them coming to Leander.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I appreciate that.
Can you tell us just a little bit about Leadership Leander?
Yes. So Leadership Leander is a program we do once a year. It's an eight-month program that starts in February, ends in September, and basically, it's a half-day program where we take you through, I'm not going to say everything, but almost everything that you would need to know to be a strong leader in this community. So, for example, we do a Capitol Day where you visit the Capitol, which seems crazy, but most adults, and I would garner, even in this room, as active as they are in politics, have not been to our state Capitol and have no clue how a bill is formed. Since that little cartoon went off TV, no one knows anymore. And so we learn that. We learn about our school system, we learn about nonprofits in our community and what they're doing. You would be shocked by the amount of nonprofits that we have in this community and the work that they're doing. We spend a day, we spend two days of the program on leadership, and then we spend a day on business in the community and healthcare in the community. And so we sort of take everybody through, here's all the tools and the things that you would need to know if you want to be a strong leader in this community, and here's the people that you would need to know to be able to connect those dots. And so, and then we graduate them with the big wonderful party at our annual gala.
Wonderful, thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Anyone else?
I'm just wondering, you seem to have this unlimited amount of energy and time, and is it, are you, like, half-empty yet?
The Energizer Bunny.
No.
Not even...
That is really great. Although, if you would have caught me the day after the festival, the answer to that question would have been, so you have to, if you catch me that week after, it's always, yeah, I'm going to quit, because I don't really even need to work, so I don't know why I'm doing this. And then the week after, something like what happened, like, today, you know, getting the opportunity to bring this huge thing to Leander, that's super exciting. And then the small business that we had in our office, the two ladies that came to meet with us, were just the most incredible people that you could ever imagine meeting. And so we definitely get our cups filled back up, but it's because of the great work that we get to do. And so we, we for sure have, we get the best of Leander, there's no debate.
Well, we love you.
Thank you. That is very sweet, I appreciate it. Thank you for letting me do this work. I appreciate all of you too.
Thanks, Bridget.
Counsel, we're going to move to our consent agenda. This is an action item.
A motion to approve, and I'd like to also include the minutes as amended, please.
All second.
It's been a motion made for approval with amended minutes by Councilmember Navarrete, second by Councilmember Shepherd, is there further discussion? All in favor? All in favor? Motion does carry. We'll move to, we have no public hearings with no actions, we'll move to our public hearing. Action items, item number 18. Conduct a public hearing and consider action regarding Comprehensive Plan Amendment Case 18-CPA-002 to amend the transportation plan as set forth in the Comprehensive Plan Williamson and Travis Counties, Texas. Mr. Yanis?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a public hearing and the first reading of the ordinance that's amending the transportation plan. What we're requesting the amendment for is related to the designation of Mel Mathis Avenue in the TOD, and it is currently on our transportation plan designated as an arterial, and the, is this the, yes, this is current, okay. And the, so you can see the green is arterial. Last year, or maybe, yeah, I think it was last year, when St. Davids came in, we did an amendment to the transportation plan to remove the piece that was going to go north and connect back into 183. And when we did that, we just were really focused on St. Davids, and we didn't think about the rest of the designation of the roadway. And now, as the North Line project has come in, and we're kind of reconfiguring the layout of that roadway, it makes sense now to redesignate that. And so what we're asking y'all tonight is to redesignate it, actually, all the way from down at 2243 and South Street, from an arterial to a collector to match at what it does going south. So it changes names to Horizon Park at, at South Street and goes south, and it's a collector there, so it'll be a collector. And then, in the piece that's actually in North Line, sorry, this is the proposal, the piece that's actually in North Line, we're designating it as a new color, which is called thoroughfare per smart code. So basically, the designation is based on what is called for in the smart code. So the change is from South Street to, basically, where Metro and will come in to Mel Mathis, it'll be a collector, and then from that point forward, it'll be per the smart code. So that's the request, and be happy to answer any questions after the public hearing.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Yanis. This is a public hearing, I'm going to open the public hearing at this time. Would anyone like to speak on this item? Would anyone like to speak on this item? Hearing done, I'm going to close the public hearing, and we're going to move to discuss and consider action on the first reading of an ordinance regarding Comprehensive Plan Amendment Case 18-CPA-002 to amend the transportation plan as set forth in the Comprehensive Plan Williamson and Travis Counties, Texas. Counsel?
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been a motion made for approval by Pro Tim Siler, my recognized council member, Navarrete, with the second. Is there further discussion?
I have a question.
Sure. Who, who's the question for?
Mr. Yanis.
Mr. Yanis?
Can you please explain to us the size difference of the road from what it is currently designated to what the proposed designation is?
The current designation for Mel Mathis on the transportation plan is a 70-foot right-of-way, and I don't remember what the, and it's, it's, it's four lanes, essentially. And so the collector, it, that won't change, it's actually constructed already to that standard, so that part won't change until you get to where Metro Drive, College Way comes into Mel Mathis, and then from that point north, it'll be the designation that you'll see in the presentation for North Line. So basically, it's going to change configurations as it goes from that point north.
And it'll be decreased to two lanes?
It will be, two lanes, one, one lane in each direction with on-street parking.
And is there any concern with the high density and the traffic?
Well, I think when you see the layout, that, when we get to the, to the North Line PUD, we'll, we'll explain why that's not a concern, because of all... ended, I'm going to close the public hearing. We're going to move to discuss and consider action on the first reading of an ordinance regarding Comprehensive Plan Amendment Case 18-CPA-002 to amend the transportation plan as set forth in the Comprehensive Plan Williamson and Travis Counties, Texas. Counsel?
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been a motion made for approval by Pro Tem Siler, my recognized council member, Navarrete, with the second. Is there further discussion?
I have a question.
Sure. Who's the question for?
Mr. Yanis.
Mr. Yanis?
Can you please explain to us the size difference of the road from what it is currently designated to what the proposed designation is?
The current designation for Mel Mathis on the transportation plan is a 70-foot right-of-way, and I don't remember what the, and it's, it's four lanes, essentially. And so the collector, that won't change. It's actually constructed already to that standard. So that part won't change until you get to where Metro Drive, College Way comes into Mel Mathis. And then from that point north, it'll be the designation that you'll see in the presentation for North Line. So basically, it's going to change configurations as it goes from that point north.
And it'll be decreased to two lanes?
It will be. Two lanes, one lane in each direction with on-street parking.
And is there any concern with the high density and the traffic?
Well, I think when you see the layout, that when we get to the, to the North Line PUD, we'll, we'll explain why that's not a concern because of all the other connecting streets that go out from, from that point.
Great, thank you.
Great. Further discussion, counsel? We do have a motion second for approval. All in favor? Motion does carry unanimously. We'll move to item number 19. Conduct a public hearing and consider action regarding zoning case 18-TOD-Z-012 and subdivision case 18-TOD-CP-004 to amend the current zoning of PUD/TOD planned unit development, transit-oriented development within the S1 general sector and S2 station sector to change the sector to S2 station sector for the entire property and designate the T4 general urban zone, T5 urban center zone, and T6 urban core zone with modifications to certain standards in the Leander smart code, and to approve the North Line concept plan on four parcels of land, approximately 115.707, six acres more or less in size. More particularly described by Williamson Central Appraisal District parcels are 458187, R517094, R031604, and R457677, and generally located to the southwest of the intersection of 183A Toll Road and San Gabriel Parkway, Leander, Williamson County, Texas. Mr. Yanis?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a public hearing and first reading of a rezoning ordinance for the project that we've have in front of us called North Line. The council is fairly well-acquainted with this project from prior presentations. And I'm not going to get all the way down into the weeds as we did with the Planning and Zoning Commission last week, where they actually spent quite some time on this project. But what I will do is I'll point out the basics. This project is subject to our smart code. As the council knows, the smart code is a set of zoning standards that applies specifically within the heart of the TOD. And the intent of the smart code is to create a walkable, mixed-use downtown environment in that area, to create a network of streets and blocks that will be that heart of the city going forward. There are two basic ways in which you can zone land within the TOD under the smart code. One is an administrative process, when you're not asking for any variations to the smart code. The other is through the public hearing process, which we are in tonight, because the developer of the North Line project has asked for some variations from the smart code. So that's what we're in. We're in that process that's there on the, on the right-hand side. This is the transect zone as currently adopted by the city within the TOD. The transect zone is basically like the land use map for the TOD. It tells you what you can do and which parts of it. The property of North Line is within two different sectors, the S1 and the S2. S2 is the more intense sector. It's, it's the, the sector closest to the train station, where we anticipate the most intensity of development. S1 is slightly less intense. The developer has requested the designation of all of the property in the S2 sector. And that is one of the parts of the PUD that's before you tonight is designating the entirety of their property, S2. What that really means is what transect zones, transect zones are like the zoning district for the property, can be allocated within that. Within the S2 district, you can have a larger percentage of the T6 transect zone, which is the highest level of development intensity. And, and then there are smaller percentages of the T5 and T4, and you'll see that as we get further into it. This is basically an outline of how that works. You see the S2 sector here. It tells you the type of, of community development that you can do. This is the regional center, so this is an area that is trying to create a downtown. And then you can see the designation of the transect zones that are allowed, the T4, T5, and T6. This kind of gives you a sense of the progression of development as you get more intense across the, the, the sectors and the transects. Again, this shows you, we're in the S2 sector, and these are the allowable percentages of the transect zones that can be distributed along, on the property. This is the current zoning map. The property that the applicant owns is all of this that's in purple. And the applicant recently purchased this portion right here that already has transect zones allocated on it. And so what this application is doing, it is essentially erasing what was previously done and redoing it based on the new plan. That's the future land use map we already went over. This is the proposed zoning map. So these are the proposed transect zone designations on the property. This map doesn't make quite as much sense as this map does, because you couldn't see the streets in that one. So this is the proposed layout of the project. This is Mel Mathis right here. This is the Austin Community College campus. This is Metro Drive, Main Street, College Way. And so it's basically everything north of Brushy Creek and north of College Way. The darkest color is the T6 transect zone, so that's what allows the most intense development and the most non-residential development. So as you'll see later in the plan, they will show the building typologies that are proposed in the T6 transect zone, and you'll see why that's necessary. The T5 transect zone allows for more Main Street-type development. So it'll have mixed-use buildings that may have ground-floor retail and upper-story residential. And then the T4 transect zone is much more residential in nature, and that would be more along the lines of townhouses and those areas. There is a lot of civic space. The, the smart code calls for 5% of the overall community to have, to be civic space. In this proposal, it's approximately 14% is civic space. And you'll see it throughout the project. So you've got, it's this kind of orangish color with the black hatch. So that's a civic space, that's a civic space. This is the main civic space. It's a square around which the project is developed. Here's a civic space, here's one. And then the Creek Corridor, where we will have the hike and bike trail, is another civic space. Oops. So what you have before you tonight is the PUD. In the PUD, there are a number of variations to the letter of the smart code. Most of those are related to the phasing of development. So what the developer has asked for is the ability to modify some of the standards in the smart code as the project is in its early phases. So essentially, to allow some leniency on the location of surface parking and some of the building, the build-out percentage along the street frontages. And so those are the primary items that you'll see in the PUD application in terms of the changes to the smart code. The other item I will point out is that the, there is a set of signage standards that we're referencing in the PUD as the signage vision for the project. But we will actually approve individual variations of the signage standards in the smart code later in the project as we get closer to when they need them, as buildings are coming up. So that's something to keep in mind. And the Planning and Zoning Commission did hear this case last week. As I mentioned, they had a long workshop and asked a lot of questions, and they did unanimously recommend approval of the applicant's request. And so I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Teinberg, the applicant, and they do have a presentation as well. And then I'll be available to answer any questions that the council may have after the public hearing.
Mr. Teinberg?
Thank you, counsel. Thank you, Mayor. First, thank you for the opportunity. First off, I want to welcome two new council members to the group here. Good to see y'all here. And I also would like to note the fact that we've got a team here tonight that is at your disposal to answer questions. First off, I have our architects and land planners, Michael Schwartz and John Zubiler here in the front, Bailey Harrington with Big Red Dog Engineering, Laura Bryant's behind Bailey here, and Alan Haywood. And Laura Bryant is with Design Workshop, our landscape architect, Big Red Dog Engineering. And then Alan Haywood is also here with us as, as land council. Our architect and land planning firm will, will have this first presentation on the PUD. And there's another agenda item coming up where I'll, I'll take the lead. But without further ado, I'd like to bring Michael Schwartz to come up and, and provide the presentation on the PUD. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Schwartz. Good to see you again.
Thank you for having me back, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council members, seat manager. Alex has asked me to go through this quickly, so I am going to do my best version of quickly. Our site, you know it well. You know a little bit about us. We've been doing a lot of mixed-use development, which we look as sort of community building in places such as Fort Worth, which we started back in the mid-'80s. So it's been almost 35 years coming to your fine state to do projects. South Lake Town Center, very different Fort Worth, obviously. Fort Worth was rehabbing a downtown. South Lake was creating one where one did not exist on a 140-acre site. And we're still building it. Fire Wheel is a project in, on the outskirts of Dallas that we did with Assignment Property Group, which you all know well, who did the Domain Project. This was one of their early forays into non-mall building. We like to think we taught them a few things, but we're not convinced. And West Village is a project on, on just seven acres. So whether it's a large-scale site or a small-scale site, you can create a lot of value if it's planned well. And I would echo a lot of the comments Joe made in the workshop, that if you're down to measuring feet and inches, you're probably doing a good job, because every square inch counts if you're planning it really well, and you're sort of thinking at that human scale. This was the site before Alex acquired the additional land. And as I had mentioned back in our workshop a few months back, we had a very different planning attitude towards the site when the site was the 70 acres. It was more of an inward-focused project. And much to our amazement and much to our surprise and our delight, we, we were blessed with this additional acreage, which we were able to really revise the plan and start to create something that could feel more like a downtown and less like a project along the side of the road. Gave us a much better way of thinking about Mel Mathis in terms of, rather than just a street along the side of the development, but rather something that could now become the center of, of a development. One of the things that's really important about this site, we've got very good infrastructure and very good uses already out there. We've got the Community College, which is something we can build upon. I think it's a, you know, a valuable asset in your community and something where you want to sort of try to leverage density in a particular spot. We work in a lot of communities where everything gets so spread out. You've got something over here, something over here, something over here. And if you can kind of create a real focal point, that's a great thing. The hospital, obviously, is going to be developing over time. They're just getting started. And the, the, sort of the cherry on the sundae is the fact that you've got the, the North Line Metro Station right, right at our side or back door, depending on which direction you're coming from. As well, we're served with very good roads on the perimeter. So when the 183, 183 Tollway, San Gabriel, all provide, and Hero Way all provide good access to the site on the four sides. So we have a very different attitude about Mel Mathis in terms of it's now more of a street to get us to the site, and it's not about a through street to get us somewhere else. And with that, we developed our plan around, around that as a center for the development. These are a little wonky, so I'll go through them quickly. These are just sort of how we analyze the site. Mel Mathis as the, as the main organizing street, north-south. North Line Boulevard connects into the master plan of the Community College and, and comes around on the east and connects back into Mel Mathis and connects back over to the east or to the west side of the property. We organized our block structure based on a series of blocks and streets that come off of Mel Mathis, providing a good street network. One of the goals of a project like this is to disperse traffic. We don't want to concentrate it all on one road. We want to allow people lots of ways of getting in and out. We have blocks that are organized off of the Tollway. These are all sized for, to be flexible in terms of how they can be developed over time. Smaller blocks over off of Brushy Creek on the, on the west, and then a series of sort of what I call transitional blocks, which are the blocks that sort of mediate between the two street grids. This creates a really sort of rich environment for a downtown, because you now have both streets that go through as well as a lot of these closed views. So you get, you get terminuses, you get, let's see if I can do the pointer. There we go. So, so we have, for example, here, you know, when I look down this street, I now, my eye falls on a series of buildings, much like you might see in a European downtown, or streets that end on a space in a building like you might see here, or end on a corner like you might see here. So these create, I think, you know, much more memorable kinds of places and spaces in our communities. This plan you've seen, this is our sort of testing out of the block plan. We want to make sure that these blocks are all big enough to support a variety of different kinds of development, be it an office building, apartment building, residential, townhouse. The parking is the key. To get the density, you need to be able to go vertical with the parking ultimately. So each of these blocks have been sort of tested for their ability to park vertically in the future. We're not starting out with structured parking because of the cost. But effectively, those garages free up land later on and allow you to develop the rest of the sides of the blocks. Office is ideally suited on the north and the, on the east sides, on the two main thoroughfares. Visibility, we can get some larger office plates on those blocks. Mel Mathis would be the most diverse in terms of the different types of uses along it. It's effectively functioning as our main street. So office, residential, hotel, ground-floor retail, and obviously, the centerpiece of the project, the main square that you see. This is a sort of a vision, a vista example of what one might expect to see along Mel Mathis as you look north towards the square, a variety of different buildings and architectures, ground floor activity, restaurants, retail. The main square itself, we were just beginning to see some designs from Design Workshop. The square is intentionally shaped this way, so we can create a series of activity zones along its length rather than just a single square. The, the edges of the space will be lined with shops and retail, generous sidewalk width, so that we can have outdoor cafe space, plenty of room for landscape. The retail shops, of course, filling in on the, the ground floor space with office, residential, hotel space on the upper levels. And this is a artist's depiction of what, looking sort of southwest across the space from, sort of the north looking south in that view. As you work your way south, we, we contemplate the density stepping down a little bit. And these buildings will be designed, and this was one of the things that we wrote into the ordinance, was that we can, sort of day one, some of these buildings can have ground-floor residential uses. But they're going to be designed to retail standards, so that once the retail is filled sort of to the north, those spaces can be converted to retail use later on. It's very important that you can grow your downtown. It's going to start out at one size. There's only so much retail you can fill in the first one, five years. But then, 10, 15 years in, there'll be demand for additional space, and we want to be able to provide that. At the same time, we want to build the street out day one with buildings. Multifamily residential is sort of focused along North Line Boulevard. That space will have its own park, the triangular park that Tom referenced in the transect explanation. And then we sort of step down the scale, the residential down along College Way, to sort of three- and four-story, more sort of garden-scale buildings. But still, buildings that come out, hold the street, variety of architecture, very much, you know, notion of creating sort of a good community network of walking places. The townhouse development spans both sides, east and west. Again, we think it's important to correct, create as much market variety here. So the townhouses obviously give us a for-sale product, which gives us some additional velocity. And it also creates some really wonderful streets. It gives us a smaller dimension, so we can begin to create some smaller blocks where, where we have the, the townhouse use. And we have a, a fairly large, nearly an acre park on the west side that is sort of the centerpiece of that community. We did, we don't start here. This is where we end. We have to start with the first phase. And so we've spent a lot of time looking at how we, we'd sort of, the amount of square feet that can be absorbed in a first phase. We have a retail consultant, consulting on that. Alex has met with a number of residential developers in terms of how many units we'd make for a logical first phase. And this slide gets into one of the reasons why we have the PUD before you this evening, is that we need to be able to, we need to have a strategy in place to be able to park these, these first-phase, early-phase developments without being able to fully develop 80% of all the, of all the street frontages. And so, this is a little graphic that just kind of takes us through the development process. So this, this is kind of if you're floating in a hot-air balloon, just sort of a little bit east of the hospital, looking south. This would be Mel Mathis. This is San Gabriel here. So you can begin to see the square being built out in the first phase. We're really trying to focus as much of the development on sort of the main spine of Mel Mathis, with as much of the parking in behind there on these, what would be future development portions of those blocks. We do get some parking out here on San Gabriel, which is again, going to be important to have that for, you know, people- that for, you know, people to sort of find it easily in the early stages of this project. But eventually, those will become sites for further development. Second phase begins to add in some of the decks. We start to add more buildings in some of the more tertiary blocks. And then this view shows it fully built out with all of the block faces developed and the parking in the center of the blocks. This is a series of exhibits that are attached to the actual PEDs. So these are some of the drawing exhibits that actually codify some of the... This is the concept plan, which shows the different transects. So the T6, which is the more, the highest density of building sizes, are located primarily on the north, east, and south. The T5 is kind of the middle of the sandwich and defines the, sort of the mid-scale development, includes some amount of our townhouse community, and then the T4 being the lowest scale over to the west along Brushy Creek. This exhibit shows where our civic spaces are. So there's the sort of varying in size, the town square or the public square. Here at an acre and a half, the two parks that define the two residential communities. We have several smaller pocket parks that provide character within local areas, intersections, sort of creating some nice little sitting spaces, and then the larger sort of recreation space over along the creek. This is one of the, this exhibit illustrates one of the asks in the PUD, which is the ability to be able to, you know, we're going to build buildings on street edges per the smart code, but there are going to be block faces. They're going to be left undeveloped in the early goings. And so that's one of the things that is embedded in the language, that we're asking forbearance during the first fifteen years of the project. There are a couple of specific blocks, two in particular, where we would ask for a permanent reduction in the eighty percent rule of block face to the north, where we think visibility is going to be key. And then there's one block to the south along College Way where we've similarly asked for reduction from an eighty percent frontage along College Way to sixty percent. The PUD identifies three different street types, A, B, and C. The bulk of our streets are A, which are the most walkable, the most pedestrian-oriented. It's difficult sometimes to build a block in reality where you have A streets on all four sides of it. So a couple of the blocks, we've identified very specific locations where we can have a slight deviation from the strictures of the smart code in terms of having a portion of a parking garage touch that, a portion of that block face, or sixty feet of park, eighty feet of parking lot touching that block face, or service doors and access to service and sort of loading areas, properly screened, door designs to be approved by the director, that sort of thing. And that, this exhibit identifies some of the locations. We can't do it on street corners. We can't do it at the terminus of vistas. So we've been very careful to locate those in very specific areas, mostly on the east side of the site. And this just kind of highlights, there's a sort of example of where a garage might touch a portion of the street. This is where a garage might touch a portion of the street. And these are all sort of what I would characterize as sort of more on the backside of the block than on the front. This is where we, this, I mentioned earlier about having space that we can convert to retail later. So this is sort of identifying that these faces along the square and Mel Mathis to the north are all going to be designed and built for retail day one. These spaces further south can be, will be built to retail standards, but could have residential space in them in the early years of the project. And then this amendment simply talks about the percentage of glass that could be in those convertible spaces. Currently, all retail space has to have fifty percent glass between two and twelve feet above the sidewalk. We've asked for a reduction of forty percent between two and twelve feet, knowing that we're going to have that potential residential use there in the early stages of the project. We're not saying that we will definitely build, we may still well build it to fifty percent. We just, you know, having sort of done some preliminary layouts of what a building might look like, fifty percent is, could be a little tight if you're doing a residential use there. So we just want to build in some latitude for that so we don't have to keep coming back for warrants every time one of those tenants is there. And then lastly, something that we worked out with the planning office was not locating any parking along the area shaded in orange in here. So in other words, these are sites that will be reserved for buildings forever, so no parking will encroach within sixty feet of the sidewalk along, around the square and the two southern blocks south of the square. So I thank you for your time. I know some of you've heard all this before, so thank you for this opportunity to kind of just cover it again. And I want to just thank all of our team members that are listed here, who have been really helpful in helping us to both understand the site, figure out what the appropriate uses are, and some of the engineering involved in it. Thank you.
Great, thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing at this time. We have several people that have signed up to speak. Jennifer Gallagher. You were here early and signed up first, so you get to go first.
Thank you. I probably would have pushed myself to the front.
If you'll please state your name and address for the record. You have three minutes.
Jennifer Gallagher, 1806 Sapphire Cove, Cedar Park. So my name's Jennifer Gallagher. I'm with Pole Partners, and we operate our business here in Leander, and are property owners contiguous to this project and close by in three different parcels. And on behalf of Pole Partners, we would like to state our support for this project. We think it's great for the city, community, and citizens. And that's it.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Gallagher.
Jeff Fuller. I'll just call it 100 North Brushy because I spend about as much time there as Bridget does. Unlike our beloved Bridget, I will keep this brief.
You have three minutes.
You have your posse with you.
Yeah, and I would suggest from now on that you do limit her to three minutes. It'll be much quicker. So we did receive this presentation earlier today, and, you know, part of our, as we went through this process, we had a lot of questions, obviously, as you may as well. But, you know, we looked at this as part of our goals and objectives as a chamber. We look at, one of the main things we look at and try to focus in on as a chamber is economic growth and, you know, fostering, you know, and attracting tourism. And this project seems to fit both of those. And so with, and among other things that we do, this seems to fit within that. So we convened into a special board meeting today. We did have a unanimous group of board members there, and we unanimously voted as a board to support this project. So anything else? I think that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Joel Wixson, resident here in Leander, live at 2401 Millbrook Loop over in Bacon Creek, about as close to Cedar Park and Round Rock as we can get in this town. Quick background, I actually served on the Planning Commission, recently had a chance to serve on the Charter Review with Councilman Christine. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I actually onboarded with planning and zoning about the same time Tom did. And in those first few years, we spent a lot of time working through updates. One of the things I'm most proud of in my time with the city was the opportunity to work on the comprehensive plan update and the smart code rewrite. And I would say roughly five years ago that occurred, a lot of people in this room served on that group with me. We had numerous public hearings, Michael Watkins, multiple outside vendors. The common story to all of these meetings was, is this really going to happen? The smart code was originally approved in 2005. Several of the property owners in that area came to us and said, we thought this would occur quickly. It hasn't. We felt the pressure from them, both personally, financially, and politically, to do something better. We spent a lot of time, and almost four years ago tonight, the Planning and Zoning Commission made a recommendation to council for the smart code area. And then, it was actually July 3rd, I missed fireworks to be at city council meeting to talk about that smart code area, and we reduced the TOD, or this board reduced TOD. That's been four years. That's shocking to me that it's been that long. I am really excited to see something like this scale come to play. Our concerns at the time, because we saw pictures of Disneyland, there was a lot of talk about how great this community could become. There was very little discussion about the finance. How do we get to this point? How do we find somebody to put parcels together to create a cohesive downtown environment outside of Old Town, as much as we love it? I drove in tonight, actually drove past my exit, past the exits come here, and drove back down south by the ACC, by the St. Davids. It's a diamond in the rough. I recently had a chance to permit the first wrap product, apartment project in Cedar Park. So we build a garage and build units around the outside. It's taken all these years for that market to demand that type of product in Cedar Park. It's happening. It's here. Thank heavens that we have this opportunity in this section of town to do so much and to plan it so well. So personally, as a citizen, as a former commissioner, I am in support of this component. I think that's pretty clear. I'm also very excited about what this can do for our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wixson. Welcome, Mr. Kaplan. I recognize Mr. Kaplan as a former board member with ACC. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Council. Congratulations to the new council members. As the mayor just alluded, my name is Alan Kaplan, and I served for twenty-three years on the ACC Board of Trustees, retiring last year. As a board member and vice chair, I helped spearhead the planning and the 2014 successful bond campaign, which resulted in the Leander-San Gabriel campus, which we opened last week. Having developed seven campuses while I was on the board for the college, the two that excited me the most were Highland, for obvious reasons, and the Leander-San Gabriel campus. Both are once-in-a-lifetime developments for a community college. And so why did they excite me? Because they actually fit the visions that the board and the college had when we purchased the land. When we purchased the land in Leander here, 2010, 12, I can't remember exactly, we master-planned it, and the North Line PUD, the proposal, is the heart of the TOD. And we bought purposely into the TOD because we would like, as a board, we'd like to have a walkable urban campus. The potential for the city and the ACC's vision for that TOD allows the college to have its faculty, its students, and staff, both as users and customers. And so the master plan also envisions, the master plan for the PUD envisioned the creation of, as I said, a walkable urban destination, which is exactly what ACC envisioned when we purchased, master-planned, and developed Phase One. The excellent public spaces and programming that's proposed for the civic spaces and streetscapes would perfectly align with the ACC campus. In conclusion, the timely development of the North Line PUD would certainly help expedite Phase Two and future phases of the San Gabriel campus. For this and many other reasons, I urge you to support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaplan.
Andy Pitts, 3705 Lahitas, Leander. Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you for this opportunity. I mean, for me, I don't think it's a question of whether or not this is a good project. I think obviously it's turning into a very solid project. It's the right project for the right location. I think I'm concerned, still somewhat concerned, about the upfront money that is possibly going to be voted on. I don't know tonight. And I think since we are nine days away from a new mayor coming in and spearheading a lot of this going forward for the next three to six years, I just think that it makes a lot of sense to just step back, take a deep breath, and just take a little time and maybe push back some of the voting that doesn't necessarily have to be done tonight, and let's let them weigh in on the situation. I mean, I don't know why, I mean, this is a fifteen-to-twenty-five-year project. Why does everything have to be rushed through, you know, right before a new mayor takes place or takes his seat? So I would just caution everyone to slow down, take a deep breath, let's mull over it for the next two weeks, and I don't think that the new mayor is probably going to be against it any more than I would be against this project, but I do think that there's some aspects of it that might need to be explored a little deeper. And, you know, maybe giving the developer fourteen, fifteen million dollars upfront is the right thing to do. I don't know. You guys will make that decision, but ultimately, I just think we need to give it a little more time, and I hope that y'all will consider that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pitts.
Gola Pitts, 3705 Lahitas, Leander. Thank you, Council. I just wanted to say that I think that voting should be delayed until the new mayor is in place so that he can be given consideration on this project. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you. I don't have anyone else signed up on this item, but the public hearing is still open. Would anyone else like to speak on this item?
Yes, sir.
Come on up. What I'm going to ask is after you're done, if you'll fill out a card for us. So you've got, you already done that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, great.
Brett Burke, 1205 Magnolia Court, Cedar Park, representative for Crescent Communities, which is Bryson. Just wanted to talk about how we've met with the applicant, talked about this project, and we feel like this is the exact project that we were thinking would happen with regards to the 24-inch water line that was put in place from 183A to Baghdad, along with the wastewater gravity system that we put for this Tersin Todd. So we are in full support of this project. Thank you.
Awesome. Mr. Burke, you signed up actually for item number 22. Do you want to speak on that item also, or do you want me to? I'm just, I just want to know so I've got it right on the record. Great, thank you. Public hearing is still open. Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Yes, sir. Come on up. Same thing, if you fill out a card for me when you're done.
Yes, sir.
That'd be great. Thank you. State your name and address, and the clock will start.
Sure. My name is Joseph Heckles. I live at 1907 Phantom Horse here in Leander. I wear many hats in this community, and I just wanted to take a moment to say, I don't think anybody disagrees with the value of this project for the community, for our neighborhood, for the area, what it's going to do regionally for us. My concern is I sit and watch, and I've had the opportunity through other civic activities to see this plan in depth, and it reminds me of a community in northern Idaho where my parents have some property called Coeur d'Alene, Idaho, and they have a very similar project there. It's a beautiful downtown that was built up, and it's been neat to see over the last ten, fifteen years, when that particular portion was completed, how the community has grown up around it. And we focus on Mr. Tienberg's specific property and the other little components, but as a leadership of the city, I only implore you, as you think long-term, what are you going to do next to it? How do you incorporate this gem into an overall community plan? How do you capitalize on it to build out further and to make the rest of the community as great as we think this little parcel is going to be? And that's all I had to say. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Heckles. Again, if you'll fill out a card for me and give it to our city secretary. Dr. Styles?
4180 Highway 183. I like the project. I'm in support of it. My property is diagonally across from this development. From that standpoint, this development has the ability to help me. However, from the standpoint of having four generations of my family growing up here and living here, I do have some concerns. The TOD was structured so that developers were to be reimbursed as and after the infrastructure was built. It concerns me that in this case, the citizens of Leander are being asked to fund the bonds, to fund the infrastructure prior to construction. In approximately 1982, 1983... It concerns me that in this case, the citizens of Leander are being asked to fund the bonds, to fund the infrastructure prior to construction. In approximately 1982, 1983, several citizens of this town, my mother included, were asked to form a Blue Ribbon Committee to encourage the passage of bonds to fund curbs, gutters, drainage, and infrastructure in Old Town High Chaparral and County Glen. Just a few. The bonds passed very handily. In many cases, however, we are still waiting, 30-plus years later, for those things to be done. Because unfortunately, there's no requirement sadly that bonds have to be spent as they're originally voted on. Most of us do not spend just two hours making major expenditure decisions. It concerns me, we are doing this very thing for the city and $15 million. If the principals involved here do not have the funding to bring this project about without citizens' funds, I have questions about their ability to complete this project. I've been told that even if this happens, we still own the infrastructure. Well, we have substandard water mains and drainage throughout the old sections of this town. I found that out this week when we were playing it off my mother's lot and hit a water main two inches down. Two inches. They should deserve precedence for improvements. We have road problems at Wiley Intermead School and Rouse High School. The city made hurried decisions about our golf course and that has had decades-long repercussions. We made a similar start on an extreme sports park off Baghdad Road with a developer with limited experience and limited financing. We dodged a bullet that that time threw no credit to the City Hall and those that were sitting there at this time. Wasn't y'all, I'm not fussing at y'all. I urge the council to take a closer look at this development, make sure the city and citizens are protected financially. Take some time to review this issue and suggest improvements if need be. I've seen you spend longer timeframes on building placement, window numbers, and colors of water, of walls on development. I would think that this issue deserves at least that level of attention to detail. Someone make a motion to delay and approve of this bond pending more in-depth attention. Two hours is not a term mouth. My concern is not with the project, it's with the citizenry having to accept financial risk for private concerns. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Dr. Stiles. The public hearing is still open. Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Mr. Aberzis? I'm assuming you want to speak on this item?
Sure do.
That'd be great. If you'll fill out a card for me when you're done, please, sir.
I will. Ron Aberzis, 314 Almost Drive, Leander, Texas. I'd like to say I've had intimate knowledge of the project, being on council most recently. And I wanted to commend Mr. Teinberg and his team for what they've done over the course of the last year, bringing this project before us. I remember the first time I saw it and I was not at all, in ticed at all, to approve anything having to do with it when it first came before us, but he went back and listened to everything we had to say and I think molded into something that was much more than I thought it would ever be, at least presented by him. So, I got to condone him for what he did, the team he's put together to do this. And I think over the, since we've been talking about this for over a year, I think there's been enough discussion about it. I think you guys know where this is going. I think he's done everything he needed to do to convince you that he's what he said he was going to do. So, I wholeheartedly support it and I think that us wasting more time to get some downtown Leander, which we've been sorely missing for, since the inception of the city, just doesn't mean a whole lot to me. I think we should need to move forward. And that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Correct. Thank you, Mr. Aberzis. The public hearing is still open. Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Last chance. Okay, I want to close the public hearing. We're going to move to discuss and consider action on the first reading of an ordinance regarding zoning case 18-TOD-Z-012 and subdivision case 18-TOD-CP-004 to amend the current zoning of PUD, TOD, Plan U and Development, Transit-Orient Development within the S1 general sector and S2 station sector to change the sector to S2 station sector for the entire property and designate the T4 general urban zone, T5 urban center zone, and T6 urban core zone with modifications to certain standards in the Leander SMART Code and to approve the North Line concept plan on all four parcels of land, approximately 115.707, six acres more or less in size, more particularly described by Williamson Central Appraisal District Parcels, R458187, R517094, R031604, and R457677, and generally located to the southwest of the intersection of 183A Toll Road and San Gabriel Parkway, Leander, Williamson County, Texas. Council?
A motion to approve.
I'll second.
It's been a motion made for approval by Councilmember Stevenson with a second by Councilmember Navarrete. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Is there further discussion, Council? I would assume there'd be some questions.
Yes, I have a few questions.
Who are the questions for?
Probably Mr. Yantis to start with. Under the SMART Code variances, amendments that are being made, the second item, Chapter 3, 3.1, .12, modifying rear alley requirements, can you please explain that and how that's going to affect this project?
Sure. The SMART Code requires rear alleys and what the, this section, I need to get to it real quick. 3.1, point... Tell me again which section. 3.1, point?
12, sorry.
3.1.12. Thank you. So, that section is allowing for there to be blocks that do not have rear alleys, but that they would still provide for service areas within the center of the blocks. So, for instance, as you saw it build out where the, some of the centers of the blocks had parking structures, in those instances, they won't have a rear alley per se, but they will have areas within the center of the block that will serve the function that an alley would for service uses and that sort of.
For multifamily only or for also for the town, townhomes?
All of the townhomes will have alley access unless there is a townhouse that is on the front of a parking structure. And in that case, they would have garage access from inside the parking structure.
Okay. All right. I have another question. I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
Go ahead. No, go ahead. You go. So, the garage locations on 4.8.1A, street types and garage locations, can you tell me what that variance is for? Identify street types and garage locations as well as clarifies perimeter block length requirements.
I'm sorry, 4.1, point what?
4.8.1A.
So, in that section, the, this is where the designation of the A, B, and C streets are called out. That was the exhibit that Mr. Schwartz went through where you saw the red, green, and whatever the color of the C street was, blue. So, that section references those designations. It also allows for some of those modifications that he mentioned related to some of the build-out percentages. And I'm trying to think here, what else is... That was talking about the allowance for garages and parking structures on A streets, that exhibit that was pointed out, and wherever there is actually a parking structure that doesn't have a, another use wrapping it, it has some architectural standards for what the wall facade of that parking structure would look like.
One of the slides that I saw today, which I did not see before, was that there, and maybe I saw it incorrectly, but that there is no parking along any of the street frontage around Central Park.
Correct. So, that's...
There.
Right. So, around the Central Park, that will all be buildings, will be facing the Central Park. All of the parking for that will be in the back, on the backsides.
I understood there was going to be parallel parking.
Oh, yes. There will be on-street parallel parking. Absolutely.
Okay.
Right. It just means no parking lots essentially in those locations.
Okay. Great. Then my next question, 6.7.1 refers to a surface parking in temporary gravel?
Yes. So, in the situation where a parking lot is being built temporarily, a surface parking lot is being built temporarily where it will be replaced in the future with a building, it didn't make sense to spend all the money at that time to put the infrastructure in as if it's a permanent parking lot. And so, there is an allowance to allow them to do crushed granite parking, that sort of thing, in a temporary condition.
How long is temporary?
Well, temporary allows, that provision is allowed within the first 15 years of the project. Now, it's not anticipated that they would do that if that parking lot was intended to actually be utilized for that full 15-year period. This would really be a much more temporary condition that would be just until there's a building scheduled to be built on that lot. Does that make sense?
No.
Okay.
So, you're saying for 15 years, it could be gravel?
There are instances in which, in that 15-year period, they could do gravel parking lots. However, I don't think that if the parking lot was intended to serve for 15 years, that it would be constructed of gravel, if that makes sense.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, most of the surface parking is not meant to be there long-term.
Not long-term, but some of it could be there for 15 years. So, but in those cases, and I'll let Mr. Schwartz speak to the thoughts on that, but I would, the lots that are going to be in use for 15 years, they're going to do it in a more permanent condition.
So, I just wanted to see that specified, where that's clarified, yes. Because we got rid of that in our entire city where you can't have gravel throughout the entire city.
So, the, that provision is specifically related to where we have one of these, let's say a surface lot that goes in day one, and in year five, we want to put a deck, a parking deck, over that surface lot. So, there's going to be a 12-to-16-month construction period where we're going to have to not park cars there because the garage is going up. So, we're going to take an area beyond the footprint of the garage, put down a gravel lot so cars can temporarily park there. Once the garage is done, everybody moves back into the garage and the crushed gravel goes away. Or we have to make it into a permanent lot if it's going to stay, but it can't stay as a, we couldn't have a gravel lot for 15 years.
Okay. I just didn't see that that was specified here.
Well, that's my understanding of how the provision was written. Am I, am I correct, Alex?
Are you asking for more definitive language?
In the ordinance itself, because if a deck is going to go there, then of course you're going to pave that anyway. So, if it's already planned for a deck, then I...
Well, I think what he's saying is that the...
While the deck's under construction.
Yeah. So, it would relocate that surface parking.
Yeah, it's really an interim condition for a construction period.
Great.
Yeah.
And I totally understand and get that. I guess I just want to specify what an interim length of time is.
So, we need an idea of how long you might anticipate the construction period for the parking garage maximum length of time would take so that we can tie that to the temporary parking.
No, I actually, I actually think it's a little bit different. The time doesn't matter. What matters is that it's set as a separate parking while the construction is being done. So, it's a relocation parking or temporary relocation parking.
And I think what she's wanting is just...
It's to specify that it's a temporary relocation. You can't just do it unless you're not building the other part, right?
And that's great. But again, you know, temporary for 15 years is not temporary for me. So, I just want to make sure that the ordinance is specific.
Yeah, I think it is. It's in 6.7.4A. It says, "To the extent there is temporary surface parking to be used when a permanent garage or parking structure is being completed and parking is temporarily being displaced, the masking or screening requirement for the surface parking shall not be, shall not apply during the construction of the permanent garage or parking structure, and such temporary parking shall not be required to be paved so long as an all-weather surface is provided, so long as such temporary parking shall not be used for a period in excess of 18 months."
Thank you.
So, there is a time limit on it for 15 years?
Yes, that's exactly what I wanted. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for finding that.
We went around the block, but we got there.
Thank you very much.
And it's all right. It's in there. So, yeah.
All right. Thank you. Okay, I, stay right there. I have a question.
Stevenson?
Okay. Most of our zoning, if you have a zoning, you can put a lower intensity product in that zoning. And I'm wondering, I'm not sure how the SMART Code works or how it works here, but if we have a T5 sector, is that also allowed to have like a T4 or a T3?
No.
No. Transsect zone.
Right. So, the standards are specific to the transect zone and it's not cumulative like some of our commercial districts are.
Okay.
Anything else, Ms. Stevenson?
And, well, I'm looking at my notes here. Hold on. There, there was a question about the parking garages. Now, I know that there was a graphic up there showing the layout and so, some of them, it showed the temporary parking. Well, we're calling it temporary, the big, okay, the big parking lot there, the parking lots that are in the beginning. Now, further on, when it's all built up, all those parking areas that are going to be shown after that, so there's another graphic that showed the full build-out, and I want to see that. And I just want to make sure, because it doesn't show that they are parking garages in those areas. Where are the parking garages?
All of these dark gray boxes are parking garages.
Okay. Okay, that's where they are. All right.
And so, the only surface parking that really remains is on the lower intensity or lower-density apartments in those locations.
And it's all screened by buildings.
And it's, right, it's all interior to the block and then obviously the townhouses will have their own garages.
And they'll have their own garages underneath. Also, I'm wondering about the maximum height or stories or number of stories in these buildings. What is projected there? Have you set that or have you, you're remaining flexible as to how high those buildings are going to go?
Either way.
The code does not, I don't believe the code limits height. What will limit height is construction type. So, if we're looking at type, what's called type 3A, which is stick over a concrete or fireproof first floor, we're probably looking at nothing higher than four or five stories for the most part on average. If we revert to type 1 construction, which would be fireproof steel or concrete, then the sky's the limit. But reality in the market would suggest that the sky is not the limit, that you're going to, you know, you're not going to build space you can't lease.
Yeah. Well, I'm also thinking of our fire department. How are they going to be able to handle stories above a certain level? I know we do have a ladder truck, so maybe...
Well, and that's, and that's why if you get above a certain height, you have to be fireproof construction, you have to be type 1. And if you go above 75 feet, then the high-rise requirements kick in. So, you have to have a whole another series of requirements. And in the International Building Code, if you go above 120 feet, then there's a whole series of additional post-9/11 requirements to kick in. So, it's...
And I would assume that that type of building, that type of building would bring in cell checks.
Right here.
It would pay for a new fire truck.
This PUD is probably a unique item because it does have some fire code pieces with it. We've actually spent time with this team looking at this project. We had some questions very early on when the project came in. Matter of fact, there were some things I would not approve early on that they brought back to us and we negotiated and they adjusted the sprinkler ordinance to put items in there so we had increased safety in the buildings to allow the three-story on the pedestals. We also made enough changes that then in turn, if we did that because of the layout of the buildings, that they had to use some fire-rated materials and change the materials that they could use. Also, the layout on the streets, we talked about those earlier and I appreciate any time you ask that question. I like that. Thank you. We have the ability on the markings, covertures, and the ability, that has to run through our CAD system to make sure that our trucks can get to the radius, including the on-street parking in the layouts. So, Alex and his team came and we sat down, we talked about access on high-rise buildings exactly like that, councilmember, to make sure that we had two-sided access. And if we had the two-sided access and looking at the code variance after five stories and going to mid-rise variance and what the code would allow, and they were willing and agreed into the items to do change of building construction materials to make that available. And we could control that with sprinkler provision and have passive safety and prevent a lot of issues.
Okay. So, when, so there's not going to be a limit placed on any of the building heights here?
There's not.
Due to fire protection?
Because of, there's a transition of what the materials can be, is they're building it and it has to change in fire rating, and it also changes the passive systems they have to have in the way the air is handled, the way the ventilation systems and the sprinkler systems have to be controlled in the building.
So really, it's determined by that first ground floor what you can put above it, correct?
There's a determinant on the ground floor, and then there's a determinant after five stories.
Okay.
Or 75 feet, based on which way you want to measure that.
Okay.
And so the listed variance here, 6.1.6, where it says modifies building code requirements with regards to construction materials for buildings up to five stories.
With 3A, I believe that one talks about 3A and the AMS spray type materials in there. Those were what we said, if we're going to modify this, then you're going to use fire-resistant spray, and they're going to give us a retardant where we actually know that we don't have fire spread, and they were willing to do that above code. And then we said, you're going to modify your sprinkler from being what our current ordinance is to anything greater than 24 square foot. And what that gives us when we say 24 square foot is that then in turn they have to sprinkle closets and balconies, so we get prevention of the small fire spread.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Ask the expert and you get the answer.
Yes, yes.
Stevens, any straw for?
The, I only have one more question for Mr. Schwartz, actually, so you can go sit there. Okay, this is, this is something way back from the beginning of it, and I'm just, this is a curiosity, and maybe you've told us this before, but I just, I just want to know, when you were talking about South Lake when it was building out, and you said you're still working on it and it's at the completion, how long did it take to get that to the point where it is today?
Well, we, we opened, we opened our first phase, or I should say, the developer opened their first phase in 1999, and that, that was 125,000 feet of ground-floor retail and 125,000 feet of office above it, because I, you know, it was one over one. And it was one of the first projects like it in the country. I mean, there wasn't, there was very little walkable retail being configured that way. There was, you were seeing some early residential projects being built in different places, but that was kind of a first in that regard, or at least in the latter part of the 20th century, I should say. We used to build places like that all the time, just not recently. And it's, you know, there are no guarantees in life, and having worked in the architecture field now for not quite 40 years, I've seen lots of up and downs, and it's a very cyclical market, and, and, you know, we go through boom and bust periods. And so to say absolutely how long it's going to take something to build out is anybody's guess, but when we drew South Lake's master plan back in the late 90s, we said, you know, this is a 20, 20 to 30-year vision. And the, the key thing there was our client could have built it faster if they had put a bunch of, and I love Joe's slides, because, I mean, we didn't have the beauty of his wisdom or his number, his math, I should say. We just intuitively knew that if, if, and we had drawn a plan, the developer asked us to draw this plan where we had big boxes along the northern tier of the property that take up vast amounts of space and have a lot of surface parking in front of them, because he wanted the option to be able to build that. And then we spent the next 15 years trying to convince him not to build that, to wait, to wait, to wait, and let us build the value into the project that all the other uses are going to bring. And instead of building the big box retail, you know, the Home Depot or something like that, he built a full-fledged Hilton Hotel there because he waited. And not, not, I'm not talking about a Hilton Garden Inn, I mean a full-blown, full-flagged Hilton went up on that, on that one particular site. So, you know, you need to be patient, and I think, you know, that's, and one of the things I've learned is that having a, having a developer with roots in the community, someone who's really sort of in it for the long haul is really important for these projects, too. Someone who cares, cares a lot about it, and can, you know, can go through all the different real estate cycles that you're going to see, because you will. I mean, you know, it's, pick up the paper and, you know, what's happening this week? So there'll be ups and downs. But the project has weathered the economic storms very well, I should say, because there are, it has good bones. People go there because it's town square, not just because it has stores. I don't know if that answers your question.
That, that does, and how many acres was that?
It was 135 acres.
135, okay.
Total or just Phase 1?
No, it's a total site, it was 135, yeah.
How, how many in Phase 1?
About, I think we were about 40 acres in the first phase.
Stevens, anything else?
No, that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep, Pro Tim?
I've already asked most of my questions with Mr. Tyneberg and Ms. Anis outside of this, so this is a silly question. I just, Historical Commission has already talked about this, and we talked about this about a year ago. Can we put in something in there about, referring to the Historical Commission when it comes to street naming?
Yes, we actually had that conversation previously. I think that Mr. Tyneberg's only request is that we allow the North Line street name, and then we'll respect the Melmathis name, but then otherwise, yes, we would be seeking input on historical community names for the other streets.
Thank you. Council, we have a motion, a second for approvals or further discussion? Okay, we're going to vote. All in favor? All right, motion does carry unanimously. Congratulations, Mr. Tyneberg. Item number 20, conduct a public hearing and consider action regarding zoning case 18-Z-010 and subdivision case 18-CP-003. This applicant has actually requested to postpone this rezoning, so we will now move to our regular agenda, and I've had a request to take a break, so we're going to take about a 10-minute break. The time is 8:46, we are going to take a recess. If I could have everybody go ahead and take your seats? The time is 8:59, we're going to reconvene into our regular agenda. Item number 21 is receive the quarterly general obligation geo-bond update. This item has actually been postponed. We made a mistake putting it on the agenda. It's supposed to be a quarterly update, so that will be on a future agenda. We're going to move to item number 22. Item number 22 is discuss and consider a resolution establishing the North Line PUD Neighborhood Empowerment Zone, providing for effective date and open meetings clauses and provided for related matters. Discuss and consider an ordinance amending Article 1.09 of the Code of Ordinance to establish the North Line PUD Development Incentive Program, providing effective date and open meeting clauses, and provided for related matters, and to discuss and consider a development agreement by and between the City of Leander and the North Line PUD, and providing for related matters. I do have two people that have signed up to speak on this item. Mr. Troy Hill. Mr. Hill, welcome. I think you know the routine there. If you'll state your name and address, you have three minutes.
Just cover that right now.
Doesn't work. It still beeps, unfortunately.
I will tell you, the thing I miss most is her cooking, by the way. It's awesome. So obviously, I have to congratulate you. You've done a great job last year, and I think you've worked with that strength of the smart code a long way. So I guess my main question to you guys is, would you have passed that and have, are considering incentives if it didn't have any retail in it? And I think the question would be, would you do this for, for only apartments, right? Would you do it? And I think that has to become the question, the viability of the retail. We are in an age of Amazon. Retailers do not want to be stuck in a closed-in environment. They just don't. Fun fact, Walmart and Amazon are 87% of retail today. A town center is a great thing, you know, but, but going back to South Lake Town Square, I lived there during South Lake Town Square when it was being built. It became a destination because of the shopping, because they put a town center there, because, you know, the retail came first and people came there, and then the center just blossomed outside of that. The domain happened the same way. That's not the way this project is going to be built. This is apartments primarily first, and then we, we have a little bit of retail. You know, I've been to Charlotte, I've been to Atlanta. We have a lot of examples that we can look at where the retail becomes quote-unquote boutique retail, and today it's a yoga studio, tomorrow it's a Caldwell Banker, and next year it's a farmer's insurance. So just because it's mixed-use and everybody thinks it's cool that we have retail on the bottom doesn't mean it's going to significantly become a destination for us or significantly impact our sales tax revenue, which is important to me. So, is somebody like sticking their tongue out on the screen or something? Oh, okay. Well, that's not surprising. Anyway, you know, the question becomes, are we going to give money for something that may not contribute to the city's finances in the future? If the project is not viable, if he doesn't make it, we own the roads, but we don't own the land around the roads. It could be tied up in bankruptcy court for years. You guys guard the treasury. You have a solemn duty to guard people's money wisely, and you can't let your feelings about, we want a town square. It has to be a viable town square. They're not all going to work. They don't all work. Go to 620 and Palmer. The restaurants at that little mixed-use development have turned over six or seven times. Go to South, go to Black Star Co-op at Crestview Station.
Thank you, Ms. Hill.
Thank you.
Jennifer Gallagher?
Hello again, Jennifer Gallagher, 1806 Sapphire Cove, Cedar Park. Again, I'm here on behalf of Poll Partners. As developers ourselves, we certainly see the value in this project and believe it's a good investment for the city, for the citizens, to move forward with this. We think it's a wise use of the money, and we fully support it.
Thank you, Ms. Gallagher. Mr. Kegel?
Yes, sir, Mayor and Council. As the mayor said, there are three pieces, as he read those three pieces. Number one is establishing the Neighborhood Empowerment Zone. This is the same process that we used with the Old Town Incentive Program. It allows for fee waivers, sales tax refunds, and property tax abatements, but it does not grant any. This just sets up the tool. And number two then implements the tool, the Economic Development Ordinance, the same process once again that we used with the Old Town Incentive Program. It puts the empowerment zone in our economic development toolbox and allows the fee waivers, sales tax refunds, and property tax abatements to be used at any point in the future in this project, in this zone. But it doesn't grant any incentives, any of those incentives on its own. So the first two parts of this are just setting up our toolbox. Then number three is the development agreement. This is the contract between the developer and the city for cost-sharing in the construction of the public infrastructure. And so when you look at the slide, this is the incentives that are proposed. The first phase is about $23 million of streets, drainage, water, parks, other dry utilities. And so the proposal is for the city to issue $15 million in debt and to fund that portion of the infrastructure, and the city would be paid back just like any other developer in the TERs with the annual, with funds from the TERs. And those funds would be guaranteed to the city before any other agreements are approved in the TERs. So the, so the way the cash flow works in the TERs now, as the revenue comes in, all existing agreements, there are about five, would be met, then the overflow, and there's already overflow in cash there from those agreements, would then go into the repayment to the city for the annual debt service payment. Once all of those are met, then that overflow revenue flows into future TERs reimbursements that Mr. Tyneberg or any other development, developer could apply for. In addition to this development agreement, there's fee reimbursements and fee waivers from Mr. Tyneberg to get back a portion of the $8 million that he's going to be putting into the city infrastructure. So then the question is, why do we do that? Well, this is why the TERs was set up, is to build the, the public infrastructure that's in the TERs. And I think tonight we have the opportunity to start the transition from a bedroom community to a city, and to create a tax base. If you saw the presentation that was earlier, you can see that it will create a tax base that helps relieve the burden on the single-family residents of the town. With this, we've been presented, I think, very credible evidence using actual property tax data from Williamson County of the power of the investment in the North Line project. With the tax increment reinvestment zone, we have the tool in place to provide the funding for this project. If there's any risk for the city, it's in issuing the debt, it's one of timing. There's no question that the city will get reimbursed for its debt payments. The only question would be then, how quickly would it get paid back? But there's also risk on the other side, there's risk from inaction. If the property develops in a traditional suburban method, the delta in property tax alone is three and a half to $4 million from the North Line project to a traditional suburban. That's three and a half to $4 million annually in property tax revenue. If we do just look to the south, Cedar Park is now spending at a minimum of $40 million of public money to correct problems on Bell Boulevard and to try to create a downtown. And so while, yes, there is a retail portion of this, and retail is changing dramatically, I think the point here is that successful retail nowadays, it has to be an experience. It's not just a place to go grab something off a shelf. Successful retail has to be some sort of experience to compete with all those online competitors that are out there today. So I think the question then is, do we do this right the first time, or do we let future generations, like has had to happen in Cedar Park and elsewhere, then pick up the, the pieces and try to solve the problem that, that we could have solved today by doing it right the first time? And I will turn it over to Mr. Tyneberg now. I believe he has a presentation.
Okay, just click, click.
You can just click on that one.
Got it, got it. Thank you. Thank you, Council. Again, thank you for this opportunity. I do have a presentation. I'm going to try to go expediently through that, but I'd like to approach the, the council
Give it to Ms. Craftery.
With a couple of items here. I, I just wanted to give the council some, some opportunity to, to review the documents. I'm going to get to explaining those at, at the end of the, towards the end of the presentation, but the first stack is a stack of letters of support from important neighbors, and then the second stack really gets to the question of how viable this project is, when, when this project is able to put the horizontal infrastructure in place, what, what vertical, what vertical users are viable? And I have every user group that is part of Phase 1, multiple interested development partners listed, and so that runs the gamut between retail, hotel, office, medical office, and multifamily and townhome. So we've, we've seen the orientation, I'm just going to kind of quickly whip through that. Here, I'd like to talk about how this is really a unique opportunity for the City of Leander. Development of the city's downtown core is critical for the city long-term. The city has the potential to implement the city's vision for this TOD area, and currently there's one landowner that owns 115 acres in the core. We've completed a master plan by an acclaimed internationally acclaimed land planning organization that we're blessed to have designed this downtown for the City of Leander. The master plan has had buy-in throughout the, close to now, two years that I've been working on this project, going back and forth with representatives throughout the city, leadership and staff. This is a point that was sort of addressed earlier in some of the comments, the trends of real estate is for mixed-use. Those are the, the types of development that have the greatest value, and, and that's what the development community- And that's what the development community today is trying to focus their development dollars on. And so, this project is really at the core of what is going to create the most value and what is the trend for real estate moving forward, a town center-type urban development. And finally, we have an incredible group of team members, specifically Design Workshop, who's gonna program, design and program our public spaces, which is something that's gonna create a tremendous benefit to the city. The city's investment in this downtown, if the city does not want to be a suburban veteran community, it must build a downtown. And urban downtowns are not easy to build and they require public investment. And as was mentioned earlier, it's significantly less expensive to initially plan and correctly develop a downtown than try to retrofit it later. And so, the city has an important opportunity to have its infrastructure costs reimbursed through the TERS funding mechanism, which I'll cover in a couple of slides. This is the location of the Phase One infrastructure. These are the roads that would be built in the civic area that would be built during Phase One, shown in brown. These are the costs associated with the $27 million that would comprise Phase One. As was pointed out earlier, $23 million is required in the first part of Phase One. And then there's some optional areas that can be expanded upon for another $4 million. It's important to cover the basics of what the TERS means. I know it's been talked about, but there's a couple of highlights I wanna just point out. The TERS captures, obviously, this incremental difference in property value from its inception about 12 years ago. And that money is, obviously, increment is put back into the TOD to reimburse projects. I'd like to highlight that the type of development that occurs on TERS-covered properties is so important because if that development is dense and that development is the right type of development for creating the type of value, the benefit to the city is, you know, is exponential. So, it's critical that the type of development that happens versus other development that may be less dense and that the city doesn't reap those economic benefits. The key to this TERS opportunity is that the city takes advantage and gets the benefit of the county increment. And I think that's something to point out, that that county increment has a guaranteed 13-year term from this point forward, and it's not guaranteed after that point. There are some site-specific challenges for this location, this downtown location. I'm not gonna go into the detail, but I'd like to highlight the first one, that there's significant drainage challenges that anybody that's gonna develop on this location would need to address. We've estimated it's about $10 million to basically take water that's draining onto the site from my neighbors to the north and my neighbors to the east and just channeling that water through the property to Brushy Creek. That's a significant cost that any developer or anybody that's trying to develop this property has to address. The city's $15 million investment, it's needed to make this project viable. I wanna point out that this money is being spent by the city directly for city infrastructure. I would be an agent of the city to manage this project for no fee. I think that's very important to point that out. I'm gonna be dedicating a significant amount of the property to the city for right-of-way and for civic infrastructure. And it's important to note again, there's another $8 to $12 million that I'm spending to ensure that this project becomes a reality in the near term alongside the city's 15. I'm not really gonna go into this, but Urban Three's presentation earlier today really created an incredible basis for this decision-making tonight. And I'd like to just point out the final bullet point that I think it's really a double benefit going on here, where if you create a dense development, you're creating that incredible economic value for the city. But it's also coupled with this TERS mechanism that takes advantage of the county money. I'm not really gonna go into this either, but it's, this slide sort of touches upon the question, if we don't build a downtown, what is the option? And as that sort of bottom slide or bottom bullet indicates, you know, I think it would be a real tragedy for the city to lose this opportunity. These next couple of slides show really our Landscape Architect Design Workshop's initial concepts on Town Square, which is gonna be built early on in the project. And obviously, this process is gonna be a city and community-driven process to program and further refine the design of this, what's gonna be a tremendous benefit to the city, in the core of the city. But these are just a couple of images that can showcase what we plan to have coming at this really critical location. Folks have asked, what am I bringing to the table? And I just think it's important to highlight that I've spent a tremendous amount of money putting a number of different parcels into one ownership so that there is the opportunity to master plan, as our land planners alluded to earlier, master plan a true downtown location. I'll be spending significantly, significant additional money. I've spent significant funds to pay for all the consultants to make sure that we have a plan that is gonna work with the city. Initially, things were brought to the city, had some great feedback, and took it back and hired the experts that could ensure that we have the best possible plan and best possible coordination for this project. I'll be spending a significant amount of additional money up until the bonds get issued to move forward with the design so that we're ready to start construction at that point. As mentioned earlier, fronting another $8 to $12 million. The land that I'm dedicating back to the city, not selling, but dedicating, is representing more than 30% of the 115 acres. I wanna point out zoning, it does not dictate uses. And we have a tremendously mixed-use project moving forward with viable users, as documented in the information I passed along. There's a huge need for retail, for hotel, and for office. And those uses are significantly core to the first phase of this project. I also wanna point out, I'm gonna be taking on a tremendous amount of development risk. And retail, as has been alluded to earlier, retail is a finicky business. And it's a lost leader, but it's super important to have retail in this project. We have an anchor, two anchors that we've identified that are critical through our urban, our retail consultants' expertise that would anchor a retail center here, grocer and cinema. And we've got tremendous interest from the grocer and the cinema that we have identified. So, I think it's just important to point out that I've got sort of more financial risk at play here than the city does. Project viability, documentation that's being viewed, interested and motivated users. I'll leave it at that. And then, I think it's really important to show, I've got tremendous support from my neighbors. Got letters that have been circulated from Capital Metro, from St. David's, from Milestone, Bryson, a couple of other landowners in the area. ACC and HEB have expressed support. They can't officially do that due to their policies. But we also have a poll represented here tonight who's also expressed interest. So, there's a couple of things that I'd just sort of like to say in closing. I know that there may be some people in this room here to voice their opposition to the city's investment. And people may have various reasons for their views, whether it be that they don't like that the North Line property may be treated differently than others in the TOD, that they may not agree with certain city development requirements, and this is a way to demonstrate that, or whether they specifically see that an approval by the city here represents validity to the Leander Smart Code that they want to oppose, or whether it's just a way to generally demonstrate resentment towards city policies or staff or whatnot. However, I believe it is very important for everyone in this room to acknowledge that what is being put forth tonight relates to a specific property that is different. This property is the core of the city's new downtown and should be treated as only one of its kind, since it is the only location where the city can establish the correct platform for its downtown at its inception. That is why I pursued cobbling together this property ownership from three different owners and why I took the risk to pay an expensive but exceptional master planning firm to design the downtown street grid, because it is in the best interest of the city and the community as to how this property is developed. Now, others could have gone down this path before me with this property, but that has not happened. Given what is going on currently with development of the properties right around me, to the north with St. David's, to the south with Austin Community College, and the general state of Leander's overall exceptional growth, the timing is now ideal to invest in the city's downtown here. You've heard all the evidence why this is an intelligent, strategic, and justified investment for the city, particularly as it takes advantage of the TERS reimbursement opportunity with the county's funding. Therefore, I ask that you please remove the politics from your decision tonight and appreciate the fact that this is a unique situation whereby I anticipate everyone can agree that this urban master plan, as hopefully I solidified by the vote earlier, is ideal for this specific downtown property. In order for this core TOD property per this urban design to be viable, to develop now, the city investment is needed. As an elected official, I appreciate that you will make the decision in the best interest of the city, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Tyneberg. You'll stay close, I'm sure there's gonna have some questions for you. Council, there's three separate items, but we will be taking action as one item. So, it's, we have an all or nothing, 'cause they all relate to each other. So, they're not, you can't approve one and not approve the other two is the point. So, we'll either approve all three of them or decline all three and be in one motion. But we'll open it up this time, Council.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve all three at this time.
I'll second that, but I'd like to make a comment as well.
You bet. Let me recognize the motion by Councilmember Navaretty, the second by Councilmember, what's your name, Shepherd? And Councilmember Shepherd, I'll be happy to allow you to...
I know.
I'll be happy to allow you the floor for a question or comment.
I just want to speak to the comments that this is rushed, because I feel quite the contrary. And for those of us who have been involved in this for a while now, we've seen this. Not only, I was excited when you brought this to us to begin with. And we asked a lot of questions at that original work session. And this has just gotten better and better and better. And I could not be more thrilled to have the opportunity to give this project life and to see this happen in our core. So, I just want to make sure that everyone is clear that this is not a hasty decision on your part nor ours. And I'm hopeful that this will pass, but it's not rushed.
Thank you. Council, there is a motion to second. Is there discussion?
Yes.
Yeah. Councilmember Cannon?
I've got quite a bit, so I guess we'll dive right in. I was hoping we could address these all individually. The only concern, you and I have met now several times. You know I want this here. I am tired of going down to the Domain to have my girls night out. I want this here bad. My only questions, concerns always come back to timing and money. And so, the devil's in the details. And as I have spent hours on this development agreement, which is my line of work, and so, I'm quite familiar with how a lot of it is structured. I do have some questions for, and this may be for Paige, I'm not sure. Maybe it's for, I'm sorry, Ms. Sines, I'm sorry, maybe for Mr. Nantis. So, I guess I'll just jump in. So, for the resolution regarding the Neighborhood Empowerment Zone, on the second page, my concern here is that we are entering in an ordinance that will allow rebating of property and sales tax. And we're layering that with his particular project in which the refunding and financing is defined in the development agreement. So, this makes me a little nervous that it would then allow the city to rebate without having to go to Council and refund when the development agreement is pretty specific.
The Neighborhood Empowerment Zone is based on statute. And the statute sets out specific actions the Council can take with respect to economic development. And so, the Neighborhood Empowerment Zone Resolution sets out all of those options that are allowed by statute. And as Mr. Kegel said, we have the same type of resolution for the Old Town District as well. And so, the intent of that, of the resolution in both cases is to simply establish the zone and set forth the menu of options that are available, but by no means grants those options. Any of those economic incentives that are available under the Neighborhood Empowerment Zone need to be approved by the City Council. So, just by adopting the resolution, you have not approved any economic incentives in that menu. You'd have to approve them by contract that the Council approves at a later date. There are some fee waivers that are in this current development agreement. So, those are spelled out, and those will require Council approval by action on the contract.
Okay, okay. And why do we need an empowerment zone when it's already a TERS?
The Neighborhood Empowerment Zone allows other economic incentives that are not available just by means of adopting a TERS. And those include certain fee waivers, permit fee waivers, building permit waivers, and tax...
Other than reimbursements?
Yeah, other than reimbursements.
That answered that question. Thank you very much. Why is it necessary? And I understand y'all have been working on this for a long time. We have not, and I appreciated the citizens' comments that someone moved to postpone, 'cause if it's a good deal today, it's gonna be a good deal in a month. If y'all didn't wanna do that, that's fine, but please bear with me as I try to muddle through some of this. My question, Ms. Sines, again, is why do we need the PUD Development Incentives Program as well as the Empowerment Zone?
The Economic Development Incentives Program under, for the North Line PUD, does two things. It authorizes some of the incentives that are granted in this specific development agreement and those specific, yeah, so they're tied together.
That's all I need.
Okay.
Thank you very much. All right. Some of the questions and concerns that I have had when the comment, sorry, when the comment is made that there's no risk to the city, in theory, and after my conversations with Mr. Tyneberg, I believe that he believes that to be true. I'm just concerned that the teeth isn't in the development agreement. And since he could be swapped out, because all of this is and/or a signs, that's why I wanna make sure the language is actually in here, in the development agreement. One of my bigger questions was, we have landowners that have already spent real cash, not land donation for right-of-way, but real cash, and they're waiting on their reimbursements. That was how the TERS was set up. You spend the money, you apply, you get it refunded. I've asked why, on this particular project, they didn't get TERS approval for reimbursement first? So, right now, can you please clarify? Is it possible that we approve the $15 million and then the TERS Board not approve a reimbursement of that?
I suppose that, the TERS Board is appointed by... I suppose that, the TERS Board is appointed by the city council, and then one member's appointed by the county. It's always possible.
What is the standard operating procedure in the TERS right now for reimbursements? Do they-
What do you mean?
Before somebody gets any money, they have to get approval through the TERS Board, correct?
The TERS Board approves an agreement, and then the city council confirms that agreement, and then there's an amendment to the project plan.
Okay. Why in this case would the developer not bring to the city council a full and complete package showing that the TERS Board approves the 15 million dollars that's coming out of general funds for reimbursement?
I'll answer that question.
Okay.
Yeah. I'm sorry, maybe I missed the last part of that. What about the general fund?
For reimbursement, is what I said.
It's not coming out of general fund?
No. So, as we discussed, the council is the last line of approval. This is a pretty complex project, and Mr. Timberg is already spending a lot of money on it. So, the idea was to go straight to the top to get the answer first, rather than spend a lot of time at the TERS Board and then bring an agreement forward that the council might turn down, so the idea was go get the answer first. If, you have ultimate authority. If you don't like what the TERS Board does, you've got the power to replace four of those people. So, there's no reason it would be turned down. That's what this board was set up to do, is to approve these projects. But if for some reason they don't, you've got the power to change that.
So, just to clarify, you're saying that if tonight we approve the 15 million dollars certificate of obligation, which, to clarify, Mayor, you said it doesn't come out of the general fund, but it is city taxpayers that are guaranteeing that loan, correct?
Yes. It is backed by taxes. Yes, it is.
Okay. So, I feel a responsibility to the taxpayers to make sure, but you're saying if we approve the 15 million, and then we go to the TERS Board and they deny reimbursement, we right then and there could replace them?
It's up to the city council.
Okay, they're not on a scheduled cycle of board service?
There's a schedule, but there's oversight by the council.
Okay, okay. So, then that leads to my next question, is just recently the council doubled the TERS reimbursement from, I think it was 60 million to 120 million. Why haven't we submitted that to the county for final approval? Because we had to vote on approving doubling the reimbursement fund from 60 million to 100 million, 120 million, but then, correct me if I'm wrong, doesn't the TERS Board also have to vote on that, the county, I'm sorry, the county has to vote on that as well?
I'm not understanding.
I can answer it again.
Okay.
So, it doesn't have anything to do with this project?
I know that, but it's the same process, right?
Well, now you lost me there.
The city council is doing something in hopes that other parties to this TERS will back us up.
If the city, the city voted to increase the amount of the TERS that the city is accountable for, the county is separate.
Well, hang on. Let's, I can answer this. I didn't understand where you're going, but, so, it has nothing to do with this project tonight, but the TERS Board asked the council, and the council has asked the county, and it has to be, the budget, any increase in the budget over 20% has to have agreement from both the city and the county. So, there was no timeline on going to the county, and the reason it hasn't happened yet was because we were waiting on getting all this data from the things you saw tonight, the projections, and the projects that you saw tonight, to be able to take to the county and give a credible presentation and say, look what we're doing, look what we can do in the future.
Okay.
And so, but whether the county would grant that or not has no impact on this project.
Okay.
Are you specifically talking about this project, or are you asking for a previous landowner that has developed in that area and is looking for TERS reimbursement?
We, there's several landowners that have written large checks that are waiting for their reimbursements. They're following by these rules and we're asking-
Can we not discuss other landowners' issues tonight? I really think we need to stick with this issue tonight for the TERS.
Okay, and I understand, but it is one and the same. It's the same TERS.
I could answer that quickly. All, as we said, as we discussed, all the previous agreements are funded on an annual basis. They doesn't require a budget increase for the previous agreements that have already been approved.
Correct. But there are monies owed that should we not extend in 13 years, those TERS landowners who have already spent money may or may not get all of their money back.
That, this project would not impact that, because those, the agreement, the specific agreements with those property owners defines what they get, what percentage of the TERS funds they receive and from what property.
Okay.
So, this would not impact that.
The only connection is that it's a different set of rules for the same TERS. That's the connection. The rules for them are you pay for the improvements first, and you submit for reimbursements, and then you wait your turn and get it, and Mr. Timberg is requesting that we front him that money.
I'll answer that again. Yes, but every agreement that we have is different. There's not a template for every one of them. They're all different. And so, the point here on the debt issue is an additional incentive to this project, because it seemed so important, and it needed it to get started, and the payoff was immense, where the other projects didn't have quite the same payoff.
Okay. So, Mr. Timberg and I have spoken about how he is spending eight to 10 to 13 million dollars alongside the city, so I just want to know where in the development agreement does it say that he is going to start spending his money at the same time the city is spending the taxpayer money?
If the council approves the agreement tonight, Mr. Timberg will have to start spending money to design the project, and the agreement recognizes that funds that he spends now may not be recoverable through the bond issuance. It's gonna depend on the rules governing the bond issuance. So, that's money he starts spending right away. At the time that the contracts are ready to be let, the design, he's gotta design all the phase one infrastructure, so that's what we call the city improvements that are funded by the bonds, the water and wastewater improvements that are eligible for impact fee rebates, and then the developer improvements for which he'll seek TERS reimbursement, so that's kind of the three groups. He's gotta design all of that, and at the time that the contract is going to be let for the city improvements, he's also got to show that he's got construction contracts for those other two categories of improvement, so that everything is proceeding along the same construction timeline. There will be payment performance bonds that are required for the city improvements as well as for the water and wastewater improvements.
Okay. When I reviewed this with the city manager, I don't think we could find in here where it said he had to post fiscal or post bonds when we sell the 15 million dollar bonds.
That's correct. He doesn't have to.
So, and he is already saying he's going to, so he's fine with putting it in there, so that would make me feel a lot better.
It's 2.03. And this is before-
Then I misspoke.
It's a lot.
Because we've spent a long time looking for it, so.
It's before the city approves the construction contract, so it's at that point. The current timeframe is that the bidding of the contracts occurs, and then the city improvements will be publicly bid in accordance with laws governing cities, and then before the city approves the construction contract, which is for the city improvements, the developer has to convey certain easements where those, those improvements will be constructed. They have to post, he has to post fiscal for the water improvements and wastewater improvements, and he has to have entered into the contracts for the construction of the other improvements as well. So, that's in the section 2.03.
That's what we were looking for. Thank you.
Sure.
And one of the other aspects of this that I think shouldn't be missed is that this project would add substantial value to the TERS, which would increase the funds available to pay back.
I absolutely agree, but that goes to my next point in concern, is that it actually does that really when it goes vertical. And so, there's no performance as far as any kind of construction, and in fact, he's got five years to do the bare minimum of a site plan, which is already done. So, that was my other concern.
So, the initial, the initial performance is get the infrastructure in. That's the initial performance, and that's, the bonds are paying for that. After that, there's a priority in the reimbursement of the TERS reimbursements, which is city improvements first. The city's going to have to get paid back any outstanding or accrued debt service, as well as start receiving enough funds from the TERS to cover the debt service going forward. So, the city's first in line. After that, the developer can start receiving TERS reimbursements for the developer-funded improvements. He's not gonna get his reimbursements if there's not value on the ground. So, that, that's, it's rather than a performance measure, it's more of aligning incentives. So, he would be incentivized to put value on the ground so that he can start recovering his costs more quickly. And he's also running the clock against the TERS either ending in 2013, or, I'm sorry, in 13 years, or the county increment ending at that time. There are performance measures related to the water and wastewater impact fee rebates. If he does not meet those performance standards with respect to having to have a certain number of building permits and site plan applications filed within five years and then with eight years, then the water and wastewater impact fee reimbursements, they stop.
Okay.
He's also incentivized to get value on the ground to start receiving those reimbursements, because he doesn't get those until building permits are filed. So, those incentives are aligned, plus there's a performance standard. The same goes with the permit. There's some permit fee reimbursements.
Right.
I think those are gonna be less impacted by that performance measure, because those will get paid back pretty quickly. But everything, it's not just a straight, often these are structured as a, you put in a certain number of jobs, you put in a certain number of value, you meet these criteria every year, and then you get a repayment back. What he's getting paid back for is a dollar figure tied to improvements he's putting in the ground, as opposed to just simply, you added value to the city, you get to share in the, you get to share in the added value.
Right.
Which is similar to a couple of the other agreements that y'all have with other economic development projects. So, this all goes back to, he's not sharing in the increase in property value just for performance.
Of course.
It's related to putting the infrastructure in and payment back for that infrastructure.
Right. But the city really, the whole point of doing all of this is to get it to go vertical.
Right.
Not to improve, and you know, I feel, not to improve one man's land so that he can then sell it and double and head off to Aruba, which I know he's not going to, we've spent a lot of time on this. I want this to happen. I'm just trying to make sure that it's, that the city is protected, and so that kind of goes back to the rushing. This is, this is new, and the urban three, is that what they were called? For us just to get that information five minutes before the next meeting starts where we're supposed to vote on it, that's not enough time for me to absorb it anyway, or ask questions. We couldn't ask any questions. So, that's the feeling of being rushed, that I don't understand why we're trying to rush this through so quickly. But they already answered that, so let me get down to my next question. I'm sure I just don't understand this, but it says the developer's entitled to assign all of the developer rights to receive reimbursements without said lender being required to assume the obligations of the developer. Can you please explain that to me? I'm sure, I'm sure I just don't understand.
I'll speak to what I can, and the developer's attorney may, I believe he's still here, may speak to some of that, but basically, that's a financing tool for the, for the developer, that the developer's lending money, the financing entity is lending money to the developer, and they may want those rights to receive reimbursements and payments as collateral. I mean, is that what it is? Okay. So.
So, again, how is the city protected should the lender take over his notes? If the lender is not being required to assume the obligations? I'm, like I said, I'm sure-
All the lender wants is the payments to guarantee the financing, and so that helps the developer get financing, but if, I'm not sure the lender's the appropriate party to take over the obligations either. If the lender has taken over the property, then there's an issue.
Right. I just want to make sure the city's protected on the investment. If he defaults, because it's one seller, and yes, we have pipes and streets in the ground, and that's great, but we've had pipes and streets in that area, and it's still been 13 years. So, when I saw that, that just jumped out at me. It concerned me a little bit, that he, if he sold to another developer who can pick up where he's left off, because they know that they're going to get the reimbursements, that makes sense to me. They're obligated, they're getting the reimbursements. In this case, it's saying-
This is not, this allows him a tool to obtain financing, and so a lender, in order to get financing and receive the payments as collateral, wouldn't want to have the obligation to develop, because that kind of has, it's a strange transaction for the lender to have an obligation when they're the financier also. So, this is not intended to address city protection or not. It does allow the developer to use the payments as a method of getting collateral for financing for the, for whatever he's going to get financing for. So, I wouldn't, I guess I wouldn't look at this as a plus or minus in the category of city protection that the developer, that the lender's not taking on the obligation. The lender probably would have that option under its agreements with the developer if the developer defaults in some way. The lender's gonna be just as motivated as the city to turn the property to someone who can pick up the project. So, this is just kind of recognizing a tool to the developer to obtain financing and a lender to get collateral, and then the agreements with the developer and the lender would address the lender's recourse in the event the developer does not perform.
The city then is not party to that agreement, however. So, as city attorney, are you comfortable that the citizens' money is protected in the event of a default?
In the event of the developer going bankrupt, that's not, that's not addressed in this agreement. What's addressed in this agreement is-
Say non-performance, maybe.
A non-performance. This addresses getting the infrastructure in the ground. Once the infrastructure is in the ground and the developer is not able to push the project forward, then the consequences to the developer are that they're not gonna get, he's not gonna get TERS reimbursements. If he doesn't put value in the ground, then he's not going to recover his-
Of course, because he didn't spend the money, so.
Well, he would have spent a portion of the money to, his portion of the money to put in the developer improvements and the water and wastewater improvements. So, if he's not there to finish out the project, he's not there to reap the rewards either. He doesn't reap the rewards of the wastewater impact fee rebates. He doesn't reap the rewards of the, of the TERS reimbursements if he's not adding value to the ground. If he's not at the table anymore, because he defaulted, he's not recovering that, and he's not making profit off of the project being successful either.
And so, that goes back to, you're saying we have security, because before we break ground using our 15 million, he's already obligated and has to join in with the developer improvements?
Right. This just, this just addresses putting the infrastructure in the ground. This is what this addresses and getting that completed.
But in or, I'm sorry, I keep asking, but in order for the TERS to have enough money to reimburse him and the city, more importantly, we really have to go vertical. The increased property value of putting streets and pipes in there is not gonna be enough in 13 years to pay back the 15, 15 dollars, I wish, 15 million.
I think that was addressed. I can't answer that.
I wouldn't necessarily say that.
I don't know the answer to that question.
Because it's not, the reimbursements are not just based on, and now we're talking about the city reimbursements. The reimbursements are not just based on his project, it's based on the entire TERS. And as we discussed, there are many projects that are being built on the TERS that don't have any reimbursements, and they're contributing their entire 50% of the city and the county tax rate into the TERS.
And if, you know, if the infrastructure's in the ground and you have the zoning in place, then you have a different, you have a different status of the land than you did as of today. And so is that something that someone will pick up and continue? There, there's no such thing as a risk-free transaction on anything the city does or anyone, any, anything anyone does. So that, that's how you'd have to look at it, is okay, we get the, the money, we get the infrastructure in the ground, we have the zoning in place. If the developer, for some reason, can't continue, is that something that someone else is more easily able to step in and continue from that point versus what it is today? So, I mean, those are just things to think about. But again, there's no risk-free transaction that anybody does.
Right. Okay, I guess my last note here, I'm still not very comfortable with it, but my last note here is, is there any written performance requirement as to the development of the Central Park?
Not in, in this document. Any kind of standards are set forth in the, are set forth in the PUD, so I, I wouldn't be able to speak to that.
Okay. I don't know who could.
We're all looking to choose. Yeah, well, there's a design that you saw.
Right.
That is already in the works. And then there are design standards for the different civic space types that are in the PUD.
Absolutely, I get that. Is there any requirement by the developer to develop the Central Park as that is a, that goes to the neighborhood empowerment zone?
Yes, it is a required, it's required to be developed in the phase one of the project, and it's required to meet the standards that are in the PUD.
Okay.
For the civic space type, which is.
And is that defined in the developer agreement? Because I didn't see it.
Defined in the previous.
Yes, it's defined in the PUD.
Defined in the PUD, not in the developer agreement. Okay, great.
Start the floor. Anything else?
Not right now, thank you.
Counsel, who's next? Okay, there is a.
And I apologize, I don't really know who can answer this question. I'm the new girl here. The thought of writing a $15 million check is a little terrifying. And I understand TERS, my understanding of TERS prior to this project was really that it was performance-based reimbursement. And I know that you spoke to that a bit, Ms. Sines. I'm still a little unclear as to if something goes wrong with the market, or, or he sells or anything, how do we ensure that we are getting our 15 million plus all of the costs associated with that back? I just feel like there are so many neighborhoods that need improvements, and I understand we're getting extra value out of this one, but the thought of, I understand we're going to get roads, but we always get those anyway. The thought of just building roads in, in fields that don't get completed versus doing something for the residents we already have terrifies me.
I think perhaps I could answer that question because this is not an either or, this is not, put the money in this project instead of some other project. So, but, very valid concern, but this doesn't preclude us from doing work in, in other neighborhoods. And so then the, then the concern, and that's always a valid one, everyone's acknowledged it, the economy goes up and down, things, things happen, we've seen that. In, in order for us to, to really have the risk, everything in the TERS would have to stop. That means, that means Bryson, that means Crescent, that means Maya Vista, that means St. David's. St. David's and Leander Station. So all of those are going to be contributing to the TERS that will contribute to that payment. So it would have to be a very significant downturn, but that, you know, we, we just went through the Great Recession. Who's to say it can't, it can't happen again? But even through the Great Recession, Leander just slowed down. Now, we slowed down significantly, but not like the rest of the country. We were still building new houses, still building new things in, in Leander. So there's, there's already fund balance available in the TERS to put towards this. We have cushion in the debt service fund, and the, the growth in the TERS revenue is starting to grow exponentially now. So the, the concern there is valid, but it's going to require everything to stop.
And so I'm, excuse me, Mr. Kegel, I thought I had understood that if Northline is approved, that we have then committed the rest of the TERS money. So if anyone else were to come into the TERS and want to develop in the TERS and get reimbursed, that we've already committed those funds?
No, that, that's not entirely accurate. You'll have committed a lot of them because there's 33, 33 million left. So, and that's part of the, part of the.
After the 15?
Uh, no, no, 33 before that. So that, that does go to your earlier question about increasing the budget. So that's why we're still planning on, ongoing. But, but then, assume for a minute that the budget was increased to 500 million, well, there's still only 13 years left in the TERS. So at, at some point, it doesn't matter how high you go, that's never going to happen. The, those, that amount of reimbursements would never happen unless the life of the TERS were extended. So the, the real issue on future reimbursements is not so much the budget, although that is a limiting factor. It's that we're going to make sure that the city is first in line after the already approved agreements, and that all of those debt service payments are 100% covered before more reimbursements fall to the next in-line, excuse me, reimbursement agreement. So I think that's the real limiting factor for future agreements.
So just to clarify, you're saying there still is money available in the, if we say yes to Northline, other projects can still come to us and, and request?
Yes.
Okay. That's great to know.
Okay, we do have a motion and a second, is there further discussion?
I'm sorry, I still didn't get full clarification on the performance agreement. I didn't see and hear where there's an obligation to have X done by such and such. Like, like the deal that we have right now with St. David's is very clear.
Are you talking about for the infrastructure to be done?
I think the vertical is what you're probably talking about.
Anything.
Oh.
Anything y'all have.
The construction contracts, once they're, they're, they're going to design, and then when they bid the project, there will be timeframes for completion of the improvements within those construction contracts.
And what happens if they're not completed in that time?
Then there are bonds that would be, that can be called to cause them to be completed. There's, there's, the city can declare the, the developer in default. The developer's got time to cause the project to, to be completed.
Okay. So in essence, we do have some sort of collateral, some sort of leverage should things not get completed?
It's, it's, you've got bonds that you can call to, for the city improvements and the water and wastewater improvements to guarantee the completion of the project if it's not, if it's not proceeding in that manner.
And I'm sorry, what does that mean, bonds that we can call? That we pay for?
It's another source of funds to ensure the completion of the prod, of the project.
Okay.
There, so that, the contractor and the developer don't typically want that to happen, so that helps drive completion. There's also self-interest that would drive completion so that projects can be done, so that the project can go vert, vertical, that the developer could get sued for failure to perform.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure. So we're protected, just to be clear, we're protected to make sure the infrastructure gets in there?
You're right. It's, it's not, it's not a matter of recovering money, it's a matter of causing completion.
That's right. And so getting the pipes in the ground, it's not, the taxpayers aren't just wasting their money.
Right.
It's improving property.
Mm-hmm.
But really, we need it to go vertical.
Right.
Thank you.
Okay, counsel, any further discussion? We do have a motion and a second for approval. Okay, we're going to take a vote. All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries five to. Councilmember Cannon and Setoquist voting nay. Congratulations, Mr. Tyberg. Write a check tomorrow, start building, let's get it going. Thank you. We're going to move to item number 23. Discuss and consider entering into an interlocal agreement with LCRRA for the Ridgemore Electric Substation. Mr. Yanis.
Thank you, Mayor. This is related to the LCRRA electric transmission line project that I think all the council is aware of, that we've been working on for the last couple of years now with LCRRA related to the route alignment. This is specifically related to the location of the new substation in the city of Leander, and the development agreement before you, because LCRRA is an agency of the state of Texas, they are not subject to all of the city's rules and regulations as it pertains to development. And so this development agreement does lay out some specific performance standards for the new substation, and those are in that agreement. I think Ms. Sines handed out, or Ms. Crabtree handed out a, some revisions to you on the dais, but basically, the main things we're concerned about in this are aesthetics is one thing, and so we're dealing with that through screening of the substation, as well as making sure that water quality and drainage issues are addressed. And then also, because it is adjacent to Brushy Creek, making sure that we preserve the trail corridor and get the, and get the hike and bike trail able to be constructed in that location. If you have to answer any questions that the council may have about this agreement.
Counsel?
So they, they did agree to put the trail in?
They've agreed to grant the easement.
They grant, okay, okay. And, excuse me, we're waiving the 100-foot riparian corridor?
No, ma'am.
Okay, I'm sorry, then I.
They are actually complying with the 100-foot riparian corridor.
Perfect.
Yep.
Is there a motion, counsel?
A motion to approve.
A second.
A motion made for approval by Councilmember Shepherd, with a second by Councilmember Stevenson. Further discussion? All in favor? Motion does carry.
Thank you.
Item number 24. Discuss and consider amendment three to task order FNI one with Freese and Nichols Incorporated for Design Bidding and Construction Phase Professional Services for the San Gabriel Parkway Road Project in the amount of $298,832, and authorizing the city manager to execute any and all necessary documents. Mr. Watts?
This amendment provides for, for the following scope of work changes. The first change is dividing the project into three phases to facilitate the accelerated design of the middle segment of the project in order for Palmara Bluff to proceed with the concurrent bidding and construction of all four lanes of San Gabriel Parkway within the limits of the common boundary between Palmara Bluff and Palmara Ridge during the construction of the first phase of Palmara Bluff in accordance with a cost-sharing agreement with the developer. In addition to that, it also added a, adds a roundabout at Logan Delway and San Gabriel, Logan Delway is the primary, well, is the connector between Palmara Bluff and Palmara Ridge. It also provides for the evaluation of a roundabout at San Gabriel, at, at San Gabriel and County Road 270, and a interim realignment of that in consideration of that future roundabout. Compensation for this additional work, as the mayor noted in, in reading the agenda item, is to, a lump sum amount of $298,832. Staff requests authorization, city manager negotiate and execute amendment three to task order FNI three.
Counsel?
All motion to approve.
A second.
A motion made by Councilmember Shepherd, with a second by Councilmember Navarrettis. Is there further discussion?
I just have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Watts, how much more do these roundabouts cost us? I see the design is like.
It's our belief, it's our belief that it is, that the additional cost of a roundabout with additional paving and additional features and a little bit of additional property is offset by the cost of eliminating a traffic signal. The cost of a traffic signal is $400,000.
Wow. Thank you. That's what I needed to know. That's great.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. Further discussion? All in favor? Motion does carry.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Watts. Item number 25. Discuss and consider authorizing the purchase of 45 replacement radios for the Leander Police Department, 45 replacement radios for Leander Fire Department, for a total of 90 radios from Motorola through Houston Galveston Area Council, HGAC Cooperative, purchasing an amount of $570,645.22, and authorizing the city manager to execute any and all necessary documents. Mr. Darnold. Couldn't get that 22 cents rounded up or down there?
Down. Always down.
We negotiated hard for that 22 cents, sir. In 2008, the city bought the first radios and started the police and fire department working in the regional radio system. So we've got 10 years of life out of that radio purchase. Motorola Corporation, two years ago, sent notice that those would be end of life, and they would no longer support those radios and no longer make parts repair. During that two years, we have been able to use spare radios, alternate, use parts off of additional radios, or get parts from warehouses that had those. Those are no longer available. We're no longer able to extend the radio repairs, and the upgrade to the regional radio system has made the interoperability of the radios talking to the computer systems non-functional. There's an additional step that can be done in the programming that we're going to use to allow the radios to be extended while we're waiting on the delivery of the new radios, so we will not be unoperational. This project is outside of the budget. We had funding available to purchase some radios, but because of the change in the upgrade to the original system, doesn't allow us to have any longer life. We're going to request the addition of 169,000 be used from increased revenue that was not projected revenue or already dedicated to go with the funds that have been used by, preserved from the fire department budget and the police department budget to put these four to five radios into each agency for a total of 90. And the reason we use the HGAC contract, it is negotiated contract, is part of that, once the contract came back in, I did meet with Motorola and we did negotiate that price down further, and then negotiated trade-in value for those. So this project, in comparative to some of our neighbors, is less by $230,000.
Good job.
Correct. Counsel?
Motion to approve.
A second.
A motion made for approval by Pro temp Syler, second by Councilmember Shepherd. Is there further discussion?
I just have a quick.
Regent, Councilmember Setoquist.
Yes, ma'am.
I just have a quick question. You said that you have some parts that you can kind of extend the life until these come in. When do you anticipate these will be on everybody and out?
Our discussion with Motorola Corporation is they should ship the radios within six weeks. We will have a two-week programming time, so hopefully within the next 60 days, they will be distributed to the patrol officers and the firefighters.
And are the radios the same for both?
There's a little bit of variable in the differences. The microphones on the firefighter radios are larger because of the gloved hand use, and the police officers have a streamlined radio adapter that puts it to their ear. So there's a little bit of job test specifics that changed the radios a little bit, and then the programming is changed a little bit because some of the interoperability channels used by law enforcement is in a different group, and then some of the other channels we use with the Forest Service and federal agencies, and ours don't.
That was a big answer. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Navarrettis?
I'm fine, sir.
Great. Here's a motion and a second for approval, for a discussion. All in favor? Motion does carry.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Item number 26. Discuss and consider the annual appointment of the tax increment reinvestment zone, the TERS number one board chair for term ending December 31, 2018. On this particular item, it's the council's position that we appoint a chair to, to the TERS board every, as the term expires. This appointment was done in August 2013, expires in October 2019. We do it a little bit early so it can get in the process if there's any kind of change or anybody comes up based on the meeting schedule. Currently, Mr. Kegel serves as the chair and serves in that capacity. I'm going to go ahead and move that Mr. Kegel be reappointed in that position again. Is there a second?
A second.
A second by Councilmember Navarrettis. Is there further discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Yes, thank you.
Um, we are going to move to item number 20. Um, we are going to move to item number 27. Discuss and consider appointment of council liaison to the Public Arts Commission. Um, in our last meeting, one of the, um, kind of, I don't, I don't want to say it was a condition, but we accepted, uh, that Mr. Siler would go to the BCRUA and we voted on that unanimously. Part of that, uh, doing that, he wished to be removed from one of the other positions that he serves as the council liaison. So there's a council liaison position to the Public Arts Commission. This is a great, uh, position, um, for maybe one of our new council members. If you, if someone of you has an interest in that or if, uh, uh, Pro Tim, if you have a motion or recommendation?
Oh, you're always putting their hand up.
I'll actually make a motion to, uh, approve Christine's statement.
I second. I second.
Gee, thanks. No, actually, I'm terrible with art, so this is not a good. If we want the commission to live, I'm not a good appointment there.
You're not, I'm, I'm not good at art.
It's not, yeah, it's a, it's not really a, it's not really a, uh, position to where, it's more of a position to where you're, um, the liaison, so you're at those meetings, report back to council.
More budget stuff.
Yeah, it's more budget stuff, provide those kind of things. So are you willing to serve in that capacity with a motion and a second? Okay. So, counsel, somebody else want to serve?
Marcy.
I wish I could. I'm unable to. I'm already overcommitted on a couple of different boards.
Uh, so most, uh, everyone on council serves on additional boards, um, that are related to the city and.
Or four or five.
We, yeah, four or five, exactly. We do have to have a liaison, so, uh.
I'm happy to do so in a field that is a little more similar. And I already talked to Jeff about that.
So I need, I need somebody to, you want to do it?
Thank you, Ms. Shannon.
Thank you.
I'll do it.
I'll make a motion for Shannon Shepherd.
I second.
Been a motion and a second. Motion by Pro Tim Siler, second by council member Cannon for Ms. Shepherd to serve as the Public Arts Commission liaison from the council. Ms. Shepherd, are you willing to serve in that capacity?
Yes.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Further discussion? All in favor? Great. Uh, I was fixing to vote against it and vote you down and then go back in, right? Thank you for stepping up to that. We'll move to item number 28. Council member closing statements. Ms. Navarrettis?
I have none.
Great. Ms. Stevenson?
Well, I'm, I'm really excited, um, by the results tonight. And I just want to say that, um, this has been a long time coming. Uh, like Joel, we were on P and Z together and, and Jeff and I were on P and Z for four years before being three years on council. And, uh, we saw this come along and this is exactly what, um, what we've been looking forward to is to have somebody come in and, and develop that whole thing so that, that it is completely comprehensive and it has a whole plan by one designer and builder and developer. Um, I'm so excited about this coming. And, um, also one more bit of news. I don't know if any of you follow hockey and the Texas Stars, but they won tonight. Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Well, I, I, I have no sports updates, but I, I share the excitement and the enthusiasm for this project. And please know that we stand ready to be available for questions or anything we can do to help you advocate and get some good users in here. We're thrilled to have it.
Absolutely.
Ms. Canna?
I just also want to tell you, you know how much I love your project and I'm excited about it. I just felt a little bit of obligation to those who voted me in to just cross all the Ts and dot all the Is. But I'll be the first one out there. So I'm, congratulations. I'm very happy for you.
Pro Tim?
I want to thank staff for their hard work on, on that project. I know it takes a lot of, um, a lot of work and just appreciate y'all's due diligence there. And I think it's going to be really cool, you know, 10 years from now, 15 years from now, to look back at that project and, and know that, um, we had a part of that and, and the success that it's going to have.
I just want to thank all the staff and everybody for hanging with us tonight. I know it's a really late night. Um, Alex, you and I have met a few times. You know, I love your project and I will completely advocate for you. I just had that one hangup that we talked about and that's it. Everything else is beautiful. Um, and then also staff, um, a lot of y'all don't know this, but for Marcy and I being new for the last two weeks, just about every day, we spend four to six hours with a different, uh, department. And you all have been so gracious and patient and we really appreciate your time. Um, and I want to make sure you guys get recognized for that because I know it's so behind the scenes. Um, and lastly, earlier this week, um, I had the honor, on a personal note, uh, with my Girl Scout troop to cut the ribbon on the city's first adaptive swing. And, um, so we had the chance to work for several months behind the scenes at, you know, from a different standpoint with Mr. Tummens and Mr. Bybee in the Parks Department. And I was blown away by how fantastic you all were, not just with the project, but in dealing with the girls. Um, it takes a special kind of person to be able to, to deal with crazy 10-year-olds. Um, and y'all did amazing and they had so much fun the other day at the ribbon cutting. And thank you so much.
Great. Before we go into executive session, staff, if there's any of you that don't need to be here on the executive session item, you're free to leave. And, uh, I'm going to go ahead and convene into exec, executive session present to section 551.071 of the To, Texas Government Code, discuss and deliberate proposed economic development incentives for a business prospect that the governmental body seeks to have locate, stay, or extend near the territory of the governmental body and in which the governmental body is conducting economic development negotiations. And being section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code and section 1.05, Texas Discipline Rules Professional Conduct to Receive Advice from Legal Counsel Regarding the Open Meetings Act. The time is 10:19. We are in executive session. The time is 10:48. We're going to reconvene into open session to take any action that is deemed appropriate in the city council discretion regarding executive session for item one, uh, local incentive for a business prospect that wishes to do business in the city. Pro Tim, do you have a motion?
I move the council accept the, uh, staff recommendation for incentives associated with the relocation of HSG Incorporated to Leander and authorize the city manager to execute any and all necessary documents to finalize the agreement.
Great. I'm going to recognize, uh, Pro Tim with the motion and council member Navarrettis with the second. Is there further discussion? All in favor? Motion does carry. And item two, legal counsel regarding the Open Meetings Act. Pro Tim?
No motion.
There is no motion. The time is 10:49. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So be it.